Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, October 14th at 7:00 at night. The first items of business will be ordinances that we will be reading in this special session. And we're doing this because some of the ordinances that we have as we approach the end of the year are time sensitive. After that, reading of the ordinances will move into committees. And we'll have planning and development, transportation, and finance and personnel. So ordinances for third reading, 9619 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to redesignate Hocking Athens Perry Community Action Programs, HAPCAP, to administer Athens Public Transit. And this is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nysli, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt 09619.
Second.
And this is a MOU that would be in effect from, let me get the dates correct here. This is, it is at the beginning of this year. Let me go over to my, I apologize, there's so many things that I have to talk about tonight. January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2022.
Thanks.
Thank you. And this, this basically is to work with HAPCAP in tandem with the, with their Athens Public Transit. And I also want to mention this would, the 2019 budget was for $225,000. We'll be figuring out the 2020 budget come fall of this coming year. And I also want to mention all the partnerships, Maha University, and also just HAPCAP, just doing a great job to have this public transit available to us in the city of Athens and beyond with Line 7 that's been pushed out to Albany and Nelsonville.
Okay. We have a motion in second for approval of 9619. Are there any comments or questions? Councilmember McGee.
Thank you. I was wondering whether this would involve any kind of increased costs for the city, whether we know this at this point in time.
That will be determined to some degree. I was told, let's see, in 2018, the local match was 10%. And this year, the local match is 20. And so if the local match stays at 20, we'll still, still stay at that rate of $225,000. But like I said, we don't know what that will be determined until almost a year from now.
Could you tell us who determines it?
Well, that, that all comes down to whether ODOT, what their, what their funding cycle and systems look like. So it's, we're pretty much in ODOT, we're in ODOT's hands when it comes to the determination of how many dollars are getting funded towards these, these systems.
By doing this transfer to HAPCAP, are we are giving up control of any kind of fees and charges for the future? Is that right? Are they setting them?
We already did that. We, we did that. We turned our bus system over to HAPCAP a couple of years ago. And so they administer this system and do, and do, and take care of the buses. This is all, all on their, all on their watch. And so we are just merely a paying partner.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Patterson.
I want to mention a little bit of information for council on Bus Route 7 in particular. Bus Route 7, in its first month, had 1,000 rides on it, which is pretty important. The other thing that I have been told by the mayor of Albany is that it has also made job attainment easier. And he mentioned basically three individuals in particular who now have a way to get to a job and back again in a responsible fashion, or otherwise they would not be able to do that. So I just share that. So the council has some idea with Bus Route 7 in particular, which, as you remember, goes from Albany through Athens to Nelsonville on an hourly pickup, drop off, whatever. And so 1,000 rides is a big deal. And for this to create job opportunities for individuals is another big deal. So again, just to share.
Now, I will add, it jumped another 200 in, in the following month. I just was at the, at the county transportation meeting on Friday, and those numbers were released for September.
That's great. All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 9719 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to redesignate Hocking Athens Perry Community Action Programs, HAPCAP, as the contract administrator for the Ohio Rural Intercity Bus Program known as GOBUS, and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nysli, I'd like to take a, take the moment to make a motion to adopt 09719.
Second.
And this is, once again, it's another MOU. This one is also with HAPCAP, and this is to, to work in tandem with them, with their, with the GOBUS program. This one does not require us to, to pay anything in, but we actually do receive rent from GOBUS to the tune of about $24,000 a year for them to use a bus station and ticketing purposes at the community center.
Okay. So we have a motion in second for approval of 9719. Are there any other comments or questions from administration, the mayor, or the audience?
I'm sorry, I did, I did forget to mention that the dates are the same. January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2022.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 9819 is an ordinance suspending Athens City Code, Section 7.05.03, continuous parking in the same location from Sunday, December 15th, 2019, through midnight on Wednesday, January 1st, 2019. And this is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nysli, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 09819.
Second.
And this is a suspension of our 24-hour parking rules that we, that we have throughout our public ride-aways. And from December 15th through January 1st of 2019 to January 1st, 2020, that allows us, that allows people to go home, wherever that home may be, and leave their car here not worried about amassing a bunch of tickets in that time.
Okay. We have a motion in second for approval of 9819. Any comments or questions from council members, administration, or the audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 9919 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to suspend temporarily the fee for parking at metered spaces in the municipal parking garage, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nysli, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 09919.
Second.
And this is to suspend those fees for parking in the parking garage excluding two-hour metered spaces. This is after 5:00 PM on Thursday, December 5th, December 12th, December 19th, and all day Saturday, November 30th, and December 7th, 14th, and 21st, 2019. This is, this is in conjunction with, with some events that OYVA usually puts on during this, this time, and also just to encourage more people to come uptown and, and have a, have a place to park.
So that's above the first floor, I believe, is when the, more than the two hours starts, starting on the second floor. So people often think that it's the entire building, but it is from the second floor on up. Okay. Yes, we have a motion in second and comments. Councilmember Reisner.
Yes. Any idea how much the city stands to lose in terms of revenue from this?
I can find that out for you. Councilmember Reisner.
I appreciate it.
I'll get you those numbers.
All right. A motion in second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 10119 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.07 Administrative Departments, Boards and Commissions, Sections 3.07.70 and 3.077.71, Athens City Commission on Disabilities. This is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 10119.
Second.
Thank you. And this is a housekeeping ordinance to update and make the calendar co, be able to be used by everybody, and it makes more sense when the different seats start and stop. So it's, it's making the calendar easier on everybody.
We have a motion in second for approval of 10119. Any other comments or questions from administration or council members or the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for second reading. I will read them through, and unless we have any suspensions, it'll pretty much be reading the titles of them unless there are comments or questions. So I will pause briefly after each one to see if there are any comments or questions. 10419 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary for design of the Columbia Avenue Sanitary Sewer. This is introduced by Councilmember Butler. Okay. No comments or questions, I'll move on. 10519 is an ordinance amending the 2019 appropriation ordinance, and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Okay. 10619 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into or to extend the agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office through December 31st, 2020. And this is introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Okay. No comments or questions, I'll move on to the next one. Ordinance 10719 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 14218 Staffing Levels and Declaring an Emergency, and is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. No comments, I'll move on. 10819 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 7116 Authorizing Non-Union Pay Grades and Declaring an Emergency, and is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. No comments. I'll move on to 10919, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to pay the head landscaper and arts parks and recreation labor supervisor a rate in accordance with Ordinance 14318, the Non-Union Personnel Fringe Benefits Package, Section 20 Promotion, and Declaring an Emergency, also introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. And if no comments, then we will move on to ordinance, an ordinance for first reading, and that is 11019. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement to provide financial support from the city's transient guest tax to the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, known as ORCA, for funding the Bailey's Trail System along with other recreational activities, and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Allow me to read the pertinent sections here before we read the title. Section 1, the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement through December 31st, 2040, to provide financial support from the city's transient guest tax paid into the general fund to the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, ORCA, a regional council of governments, COG, for funding the Bailey's Trail System along with other recreational activities. Said authorization shall be contingent upon an agreement for the same level of financial support through December 31st, 2040, by the county of Athens. A copy of said agreement is attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. And the agreement is attached to the ordinance, and it's also on our, our hard drive, so.
Okay.
Members of council can read it or, as they choose.
Okay.
Well, let's get three readings.
Please.
Thank you.
So our plan is, is that this would be read on October 14th, October 21st, and then a final reading on 11/4, or the first reading today, and so November 4th. Yes, Councilmember McGee.
Thank you. I do have some questions about this. I'm concerned, one thing that I'm very concerned over is, first, I'd like to say, I think it's a great project. I'm, I'm not opposed to the project. But I think it's a very specialized interest project, and it doesn't necessarily benefit all of the citizens of Athens. And I know what we're really thinking, that of course, we'll reap the benefits somehow indirectly through the different programs. And that may be, but it may not be too. So I, I had a question, probably the most important question that can be asked in this instance, is the question of whether this would still be funded if the city of Athens says, no, we're not going to do it. And I had asked somebody recently the question, well, since this is a very specialized kind of project, and there are chapters, mountain bike chapters, all over the country, would they be willing to contribute to seeing this actually accomplished? And the response that I received from what I would say a credible source would be, this is going to get done whether the city approves it or not. Now, I just want you to think about that just for a minute, because what we're doing is asking for 20 years of city money for a project that could possibly have all sorts of problems with anywhere from climate impact, climate change impact, to, you know, the funding of city projects that we would need money, to the impact of the oil and gas in southeast Ohio, so that people would not want to come here. So there are those kind of issues. I, I really am concerned about this. So that's the question, I would say, if we, if, there's a good chance this would be funded by other sources, and I'm sure that people could address that, then why should the city be paying the money? And one other thing I, I really want to emphasize, I'm really bothered by this, is the fact that when this was presented to council at the committee meeting, we had a chance to ask a few questions, a few questions, not the kind of exploration we really needed to have happen. And then we had eight or nine citizens come up here and take up their three minutes as they were explaining why they were in favor of it. And the very last person who got up here, the very last person, was the one who probably had the most information that we needed to hear. And we weren't given the opportunity to ask that person any questions, because he said, if you remember, he said this has been generating income for other places. And he listed two or three places, I believe, one was Colorado, that kind of example. But when I asked the question of the person who was promoting this project, I asked him, do you have any similar instances? He said no. So I have some real problems with the city going forward on this to start with. If we don't know, if we have no real statistics or evidence for the city to go forward, and I hope the administration will provide us with that, rather than having one witness come in at the very end, that we don't get to ask any questions, because that was really inappropriate. So thank you.
I'm sorry, was that a question?
Yes. The question was whether you would support this kind of program, knowing that other sources are available, that may very well support it.
Well, okay, knowing that other, you're asking me personally?
If you want to take the personal.
Well, no, I mean, as a councilperson to make a vote.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Do I know that there's other sources? No, I don't know. I mean, if you put me on a witness stand and make me swear, Mr. Reisner, do you know there's other sources? I'd have to say, no, sir, I do not know.
Okay. Do you suspect there are?
That's a supposition on my part, and that's speculation. I'm not going to speculate.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, you want to take it?
We do, and we have the mayor to offer some comments, and we do have Dawn, who's here from the Wayne National Forest, so who could also.
What I would like to share is that there's nothing that prohibits the city from seeking other funding down the road, whether that's 2020, 2021, 2026, whatever. If we can find funding that we might be eligible for applying for, we can actually put that towards what we're paying and, and have it paid off early, you know, and have it done. I will give you one example, and again, this is very early, Councilmember McGee, but one of the things that I was just exploring today is the possibility of having a state capital bill budget item in there. But again, that isn't going to be released for, you know, a year or two out for funding, but it's something that's sure, sure worth exploring to pay down on the city's portion. But there's nothing in there that would prohibit the city from paying down more quickly if we were to find other granting, grant funding out there.
So what you're saying is that there's no balloon payment on this sort of thing? Because when I, when people were describing it to me, it sounded like one of those where at the end of seven years, it kind of refigured, and then that it was for 20 years, and the payment was different depending on certain other metrics. But it is, we can pay it off early, is what you're saying?
I am saying that.
Okay. Is it over that, the amount of money over that 20 years? Would that be what we would have to pay off early?
Well, you're, what you're talking about is the, the success portion of this, you know? If this, if this trail system has no riders whatsoever, you know, it fails, you know? Is that likely? No. And then, you know, there's a kind of a mid-level portion, or mid-level of success, and then there would be a highly successful kind of range too. So that's kind of what you're getting at, that if it's, if it, if the trail is found to be, you know, excessively successful, which is wildly successful, and we have hundreds and hundreds of thousands of people riding it, then it would be reflected in the transient guest tax on the city side, of which the Voinavich School will be looking at, you know, the success portion of this as we move forward, or not success. And if it's succeeding better than expectation, we're going to see more revenue coming in. And on the county side, well, I can't speak for the county, I'll let the county speak for themselves, that's where the higher amount that we would be paying in would come from.
Councilmember Crowe.
Member McGee understands that the city, and please correct me if I'm wrong, can withdraw from this agreement at any time in the 20 years that the agreement stipulates. You're, you're financially obligated to the end of that fiscal year in which you've withdrawn, but it's not locking us into a 20-year period. Now, we did talk about in committee about making it contingent with the county on being partners in this, and I see that that language has been included in the ordinance. However, I just want to point out that, at least to my reading, it's slightly confusing in that it does say, "Said authorization shall be contingent upon an agreement for the same level of financial support through December 21st by the county of Athens." And the last line is, "A copy of said agreement is attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference." But that refers to the ORCA agreement, not to the agreement with the county. So it's, it's not exactly clear to me where we have an agreement with the county.
We, we don't.
We don't.
We don't. It's just that it's building it on the fact that the county has been involved in the discussions. The county has brought it forward, to the best of my knowledge, on their agenda and discussed it, and the county has indicated that they will be moving, taking financial support under consideration, once ours is at the second reading, our ordinance.
Am I correct on the withdrawal? And perhaps, Member McGee, has a rebuttal to what I was bringing up there?
I do.
Yeah, oh, Councilmember McGee, sorry.
I have a question concerning that. This is labeled an outdoor recreation environment impact bond for 3.6 million. The city is basically on the hook for half of that, is my understanding, and the county would be on the hook for the other half. We also have, since these people are doing a bond, and the gentleman indicated that he was getting basically 4% interest, I would assume that that interest rate and the money that the investors would be making out of that would be coming from the anticipated increase after seven years of benefits to the city. I understand all that, it's, it's a very interesting concept. Of course, we're still on the hook for the 90,000, I believe, even if we suddenly are not making the money. And I don't see, if we're calling it a bond and we're going through this process, is there any language that specifically allows us to withdraw after the second year, something like that? If there is, then then the question becomes, how can you possibly call this a bond? Or are we signing a bond? That's what I want to know.
I, we have the auditor here, but I think we can clarify, we're not on the hook for a bond. We are not entering into a bond agreement. The Port Authority is the one under considering the bond, which would provide the cash upfront for the Recreation Commission to be able to start the construction.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we're not signing off on any bond. We are pledging to give a portion of our transient guest tax revenue to ORCA, and they are the ones working with the Port Authority to take out the bond. And so we, the wording in here is, is with ORCA. That's who we will be paying, is ORCA. And then they will work with the Port Authority on the bond, bond payments.
Yes, Councilmember McGee.
Are you saying there's no legal liability for the city whatsoever to follow through with this, that? So we could quit it after the first?
No, no, that opt-out language is in there, that the mayor said, it absolutely is. Now, we had two different documents, I'm going to bring Debbie into this, because Lisa's gone here, but the three of us sat down last week, and it was 90 days in one spot and 120 in another. But there is opt-out language in there. And as Member Crowe said, you have to give them that leeway, but then you also, whatever exact timing it is, if you do it six months before, you have to stay in through the end of that year. And, but, you know, there's an opt-out to that. And our, our share is 1.2 million dollars. It's not half of, I forget the number you put out, 3.6, or whatever you put out, but it's 1.2, but yeah. So our payments, and the other thing is, and this is something I kind of pushed, but the mayor jumped right on it, is there's, there's a maximum to what we might have to pay, because we're pledging a portion of our transient guest tax monies, and if we do get an increase, but we can't, in my mind, we can't tie ourselves to just that increase for any length of time. And at, at no point would we want to pay more than 125,000. And so that would be our max. And, and yeah, it's seven years, it recalculates, at five years, the, I forget, is it the operating portion or something? But then that maxes out at 39,000, and won't go up after that.
And Councilmember Grace, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I was just going to read Section 4 about withdrawal. Any member may withdraw from ORCA upon 90 days written notice of each, or to each of the other members. Withdrawal will be final after the 90th day, except that all obligations, financial or otherwise, to ORCA, assumed by the member prior to submitting the notice of intent to withdraw, shall continue until the end of ORCA's then-current fiscal year. So at any point, the, the city can withdraw, but we would have to maintain our, our commitment to the end of that fiscal year, is, is my understanding.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what we've been talking about. So we aren't committed, what we're committing to is giving money to, to ORCA, this COG that was created for tourism, promotion, and anything that goes along with that. But the idea is they will be using that to work with the Port Authority to pay on the bond, make the bond payments. The county will be entering into the same agreement.
Councilmember McGee.
I just want to emphasize, and I appreciate Member Grace bringing this up about the exact language on this. I was concerned because at the time of the committee meeting, again, when the presentation was made, the initial thing was listed as, I believe, a pledge, and then it became a contract with the language of the person who was giving the presentation. And they used the word "bond" at one point in time. So I would hope that the city, in signing the documents, and I'm sure this would be extensive documents, that we realize that, Council, if this is approved, is approving it solely on the understanding that we would have the right to withdraw under all circumstances. Because that seems to me the crucial in this case. Thank you.
Any other, yes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Isley. I appreciate the questions that are being asked at the other end of the dais, because it is an important matter, and we are responsible for spending the public's dollars. One of the things that does entice me about our involvement and engagement with this is by supporting this ordinance, it does place Mayor Patterson on the seat as an Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia member. So then we are at the table, so to speak, and involved in future planning. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor Patterson.
I'm in that seat now. So thank you, Councilmember Butler, because Orca already exists, and Orca has had several meetings to date, so.
Thank you for clarification.
Sure.
It's not very wet, though. Councilmember Grace.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, because our ordinance is contingent upon, basically, the county pledging to match what we as a city are doing, should there also be language, or does it matter, is it important regarding what if one or the other of us chooses to withdraw from the agreement? If we're joining, is contingent upon the county also joining, should there be anything in terms of withdrawing? What if the county withdraws their support after a certain length of time? Would the city's support automatically be withdrawn because the county is no longer involved, or?
I don't know. Good question, but they would certainly have the option.
Right. So if both, and I don't know if the county's agreement is going to be essentially contingent on the city, sort of, we're codependent entities in this, then what if one or the other chooses to withdraw? How does that impact the other? I don't necessarily expect someone to have an answer, but I think it is something, since our finances are certainly linked, but are substantially different as well, I don't know if we want to consider including language regarding that, or just consider that possibility.
Okay. And I think, yeah, the clerk is indicating that she thinks that the agreement as is does cover that possibility. We can do a double check before the second reading, though, just to make sure. I appreciate the comment. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Is there anybody from the audience that wants to offer a comment or question? Yep, Don? Don McCarthy from the, yes. And did you have a comment you wanted to make while she's getting ready to speak? Okay?
So, thank you, President Isley. So in acknowledging what Mayor Patterson said, that he's already on the Orca as a member, if we did not support the ordinance, would you still remain in that seat?
Sure I would. I mean, it was Council that authorized the establishment of Orca and for me to sit at the table with Orca, you know? So I would imagine I would still serve on Orca.
Okay.
Unless Council directs me not to be on Orca anymore, or opts for the City of Athens to not be a part of Orca. But why would you do that?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just clarification.
Sure.
Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you, President Isley. I would like to address a couple of questions from Councilmember McGee. I know that he had questions about would the trail system be funded without your assistance? It would eventually. We've been working on getting grants. As an example, we have worked with Athens County Foundation. They received a National Forest Foundation grant in partnership with REI for $150,000. Likewise, Rural Action received an Appalachian Regional Commission power grant for $1.2 million. Another $150,000 of that is going towards construction. But most of that funding is actually going towards the support system for the infrastructure, including entrepreneurial development and support, so the training piece, the workforce development, let's see, community activation, and then also marketing. So it's really trying to make sure that we don't just build the infrastructure, but that we also build the support system needed to make this a successful trail system. And I also heard your comments about Seth Brown, when he was here last, mentioning there were no other case studies. I think there was a little confusion there. He was mentioning, he was speaking to the actual environmental impact bond for an outdoor recreation project. This is the first of its kind. However, there are multiple case studies, and I'm guessing that Danny Twilley, who was also here, who spoke to this last time, will be happy to speak to this. There are many case studies, and these were used in the feasibility study that Quantified Ventures put together before they went into the transaction structuring for the conservation finance project. An example is $37 million of economic impact has been brought into Arkansas from similar mountain bike studies. I'm going to let Danny speak to those. We've seen similar projects in Minnesota, the Iron Range, Cayuna. They've brought in, I'm not sure of the number, but it's similar numbers to what we're talking about for this project. There have been other places, Oak Ridge, Oregon, and I'm going to let Danny speak to a few more of those. But yes, there are many case studies, and we can provide as many of those as you would like. So I did want to speak a little more to the whole, would it be funded? We would rely on grants, and instead of building it over the next two to three years, we would be relying on grant cycles, and we would not be able to fund it and construct the whole 88-mile trail system probably for 10 to 15 years, which would reduce the impact that this can have on local communities. I will say that there are benefits to Athens. You are going to have increased outdoor recreation access for members in Athens. You're going to have increased health benefits. So there are a lot of different benefits that Athens city residents will get. Additionally, when we talk about the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia and funding that, so yes, the funds would go towards the Baileys, but it would also go to setting up the council of governments. The nonprofit that will be associated with that gives you an opportunity to potentially hire an executive director who could then apply for more grants and really build up the program that would then benefit all outdoor recreation across Athens County. So we're really striving for cross-boundary outdoor recreation management, something that we haven't done in the past, but I think it would be much more effective if we all worked together to manage and maintain recreation rather than staying in our silos. Unless there are any questions? Yes, Councilmember McGee.
On the, you've mentioned the Oregon and the Arkansas, which I believe the gentleman who was here last time would be able to give us some feedback on it, what the studies are based on. I think my question is, do you know, are those programs really similar to the proposal at all? Or maybe he should address that.
In regards to how they're funded, or how they're?
I'm actually more concerned about the location of the trail to the City of Athens as opposed to the Plains or even Columbus. I mean, is this the kind of thing that it's going to be where people will come down for the day and use the trail system and then go home? Or is it the kind of thing that people are going to actually spend some time in Athens? The thing that I liked, for instance, was Windy Nine, I think, which is an incredible benefit for Athens, but we're not paying any money for it. So I mean, that's what I'm a little concerned with.
So that gets to the size of the trail system. Do you want to speak to that, Danny?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about it.
Thank you.
Oh, you can't get down yet? Yeah, I'll try to address that just a little bit. So you were talking about the Kingdom Trails, which they basically have been seeing an increase in 20% growth rate over the last eight?
Where's that at?
It's Kingdom Trails, I'm sorry, in northeast Vermont. So it's really out in the middle of nowhere. It's about three and a half hours from Boston, about two and a half hours from Montreal. It is, it's a smaller community, substantially smaller without the infrastructure here for opportunities for spending, as we would see here in Athens from the hotels and restaurant establishments that we'd see here. They've been seeing for the last eight years about a 20% increase in visitation, where last year they saw about 140,000 visitors, and they estimated that was a $10 million in direct spending in a single year. The northwest Arkansas example, they're seeing between 90 and 150,000 visitors a year, and it's about $27 million in direct spending that they're seeing. Northwest Arkansas, it's about 30 miles from Fayetteville, which is where they have their major university. Bentonville is built up around Walmart, but it's also a relatively rural and isolated area. It's not easy to get to. The major cities you'll see, or St. Louis is probably one of the closer major cities, and then you have to start getting into Texas and some of those areas. So again, I think we are much closer to some major urban population centers as Pittsburgh, Columbus, Cincinnati, and Cleveland. In addition, we know that people are willing to visit this area and this region. For instance, we know somewhere between, again, it depends on who you ask, 3.5 to 5 million visitors to the Hocking Hills region. So we know people are willing to come down. We just want to get them a little bit further down into our area. So, you know, we also know in western North Carolina, just from mountain biking, in western North Carolina, they saw $30 million in spending in a single year. So again, I think the point is, is that we are around some major urban, or major population centers. There's nothing of this size within reach of those areas. So I think that's really the key takeaway, is that Cincinnati, they really have one, I mean, they can go to Brown County, but it's not nearly the mileage that we'll have. So we, and there's not much around there either. So I think that's going to be the key piece, is we're going to be able to draw people here because it is so unique, it is so large, and we obviously have something very special here in Athens and southeast Ohio from a cultural art community standpoint.
Thank you.
Does that help answer?
Well, I did have a follow-up question for you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Maybe I?
Could you just introduce yourself? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I am, yeah, I totally skipped that part. So yeah, my name is Danny Twilley. I'm an assistant professor at Ohio University that specializes in outdoor recreation tourism.
Okay.
Your question?
The question was basically, I mean, you quoted some interesting figures. 150,000 people is a lot for a very short time period, which I would assume for the time period that mountain biking would be used the most would probably be three to four months, maybe five. But I just wondered how many of those are actually people who are coming to the area for other things? I mean, my real question is, if somebody wanted to check your stats on this, I mean, where would they go to?
So these are coming from the Kingdom Trails. One comes from their community report that they put out. I'll be happy to share that with Council. Then you've got northwest Arkansas. That study was commissioned, and if you type in northwest Arkansas economic impact study, it will come right up. It was commissioned by the Walton Foundation, Family Foundation, and People for Bikes, and it was done by a third party. And then the Pisgah National Forest, and when it was done by two researchers out of eastern Kentucky, and it was commissioned by the Outdoor Alliance. And so these are, and I'm more than happy I have them. I'll be more than happy, maybe not tonight, but tomorrow.
If you could give us the sources so we can look it up?
Yeah, I'll send you the actual articles.
That's even great.
So it's for you to have.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mayor Patterson.
Not to remind Council, because I think Council knows this, is that our most struggling period of the year here in Athens is summer, you know, to where our businesses end up having to trim way down in terms of employees, which we all know what that does for the city. And in a case like this, to where, on the other hand, if we had 140, 180, however many, you know, visits, that those people are likely going to come into the part of our county that has the most resources for shopping, dining, you know, staying overnight, you know, a number of different things. And so that is keeping people, you know, gainfully employed through the summer months. And I would contend, and again, I'm not a mountain biker at all, but I think to couch it as something that is as truncated as you just mentioned, Councilmember McGee, you know, I would imagine that there's mountain bikers out there that enjoy riding, you know, in March, even though it's probably still chilly and maybe a little bit soggy out there, but to continue to ride or into this time of year or November. You know, I could imagine that, again, I don't mountain bike, so that's not my gig. But I would imagine that, you know, there's probably some hardcore riders that would be riding during December, January, February.
Yeah, and so, you know, when there's snow on the ground and the ground freezes, there's a lot of access, and, you know, they have even new equipment that's been developed recently in terms of biking that allows for you to take advantage of the snow and more hardback. And I think it's also important to recognize is that some of the research that we found is that, you know, serious mountain bikers will travel up to six weekends a year to mountain bike. And so, you know, the model that Seth and his team put together on 180,000 visitors was primarily built off mountain bikers. I mean, we haven't even accounted for the role of, you know, hikers, trail runners, and the work that Michael Owen is doing with Southeast Trail Runners. He owns several events, and that's a very thriving community that's growing rapidly nationally. So I think there's a lot of other user groups that can really help us get to those figures of 180,000 visitors is what the projections were built off of, so.
Okay.
Question?
Yes, Councilmember Reisner.
Do any of these mountain biker visitors, do they drink beer?
So the answer is yes. So, you know, some of the research that I've done, it shows that the two things that are very important to them when they, in terms of amenity preferences, are local restaurants. The thing that they like the least are national chains, so they love local restaurants. What they like to do is, when they're not on their bikes, is drink beer was their top thing to do.
Oh, this is the right town.
Craft beer, craft beer was the key thing with that. So yeah, so they like to eat good local food, drink good local beer. It's starting to sound a lot like Athens, and so, yeah.
I'm relieved.
Mayor Patterson.
If I may share with Council something that's anecdotal to this. Paul Logue was just attending the Creative Placemaking Conference in Davis, West Virginia, and what he reported to me is, when he was there, along with several other people, that people in Davis and in Thomas, West Virginia, which is in the middle of the Kanane Valley, they know about this. They know about the Bailey Trail System, and apparently there's a lot of chatter going on in West Virginia already about the possible opportunity of having 88 miles of mountain biking trail. I also want to share something with you, Councilmember McGee. I was sitting here just now thinking, what's a decent example to give you in terms of the time that someone would spend? If you think about how much time an individual would take to even traverse, you know, 88 miles of the Appalachian Trail or the Pacific Crest Trail or something like that, but now take that long trail that's going through multiple jurisdictions or whatever, and now coil that all around and do an 88-mile mountain biking trail in 9,000 acres, you know, it's a captured audience. So that person with 88 miles, I could only imagine that someone would want to stay longer to try and conquer all 88 miles of that. to try and conquer all 88 miles of that, and it may take a little while. It would take me a month.
Yeah, having hiked the AT, I can tell you how long it will take you to go 88 miles. But I think one of the important things to recognize is that visitation, that projection is built up over time. It's not like you build it and then the next day, we have 180,000 visitors. It, it gives us an opportunity to build up that, that infrastructure and that support network to continue to capture them and bring them back to, to our community. So, those are some of the, the opportunities.
Councilmember McGee.
Hate to ask another question. This is for the Rangers, though. I remembered what my question was. You had indicated that, I think you said a sizable amount of money. I don't recall how much would be utilized for entrepreneur development and support, I think you had called it.
Yes.
Could you explain to us what that is?
So, this is, and this would be mostly rural action, working with ACENet. Am I forgetting anyone else?
Those are the two primary.
Those are the two primaries. So, they would be working on developing workshops, providing resources, also working on this whole gap analysis of what are we missing in this area? What are your interests, you know, for business development? We're talking, there's no funding there now, but they're starting to talk about potential seed funding to help those, those individuals get their business off the ground. But this, this is the type of work they're talking about. So, workshops, teaching people how, how to run a business, you know, giving them the opportunities to work with ACENet, talking about the creative placemaking. This is not my area of expertise, but these are the things that we have been discussing.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments?
If I could add one more thing. As, as a result of this power grant, we will be working with the Appalachian Conservation Corps, which is, it's an AmeriCorps program, but they will be working with our trail builders to help them construct the trail. We, and as opposed to bringing in other crews like this, we've worked with other crews where they bring in people from elsewhere to do the work. We are working with the Appalachian Conservation Corps, who is willing to hire young adults and teach them how to build and maintain trails, and give them an opportunity to then translate that into education and a career in natural resource management. So, we are trying to look at that as well, and HAPCAP is a partner with us in that as well.
Councilmember Grace, thank you.
I just wanted to thank you both for, for coming and being willing to answer questions and share your expertise, and, and I think this, what you shared tonight is really exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to Resolution 919, and this is the second reading. A resolution accepting the petitions and articles of incorporation of the Athens Uptown Special Improvement District, known as a CID, and declaring it necessary to improve certain areas of Uptown Athens and declaring an emergency. And this was, this is, has been introduced and is now being read for the second time, introduced by Councilmember Fall. Councilmember Crowe.
Excuse me. Can number Fall or Mayor Patterson speak to the recent messenger article, which said that the CID was costing the city $14,000?
The, well, there's no amount that's been set for what the cost would be by linear foot. There's been a lot of numbers that have been talked about out there, but that requires the, the board as well as the General Assembly, as I understand it, to come up with what that would be.
So, this is the frontage that the city owns, and the taxes that we would be paying on our portion of this city?
Yes, it would be the.
Correct.
And, and the city, in the legislation at state level, you can, there's certain carve-outs that you can do, but I think it's important when we, you know, when the mayor first started this, is that the city needs to also take part of it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Well, and to share with you, you know, Ohio University, State College, State University is exempt from these as well, but Ohio University has agreed that they would like to be in within certain areas. I think it's East Union to College as well as going further south on Court Street, as far as President Street, I believe. So, they too know that this is a, a good investment in terms of having beautification projects on Court Street. I think they also, I know they do, because conversations that I've had with President Nellis understand that if, if we can really change the look and feel of the Uptown area through something like the Special Improvement District, it would certainly help, be helpful when we have potential, I don't know what it's called, but parent visitation day, recruitment, whatever it is, when they come down and they look at campus and whatnot, and if the Uptown area also looks nice. And it would be the General Assembly that also decides what do they want that money to be spent towards, you know? Could it be to have all the gum removed from the sidewalks in the Uptown area? And that, that would be up to them, snow removal, having someone who's maintaining flowers in the Uptown area, you know, just a whole sundry thing, park benches, whatever. It's their decision. We would have a voice in that, too, since we would have a seat at the table, and I'm, well, that's for council to decide, but I know that Councilmember Fall has been involved in some of the conversations going back to 2016 on the Special Improvement District. So, we don't know what that amount would be.
My concern was that there was some additional administrative amount that we were paying into, and I thought from conversations we had talked about.
Not an administrative, no. It would be our share of, for the armory, the parking garage, and the city building.
Yep.
Those are the, the main frontages that we would be paying, right along with everyone else.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And if no other comments or questions on that resolution, I would entertain a motion for us to adjourn this special session. So, move?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for adjourning. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, we have adjourned that special session. We're now going to immediately move on to planning and development. And for discussion tonight, the first item is the short-term rentals. I will precede that, your discussion, by saying, we know there are a number of people here who would like to offer comments. We would offer that we have received comments and questions from former BZA person and historian Betty Hollow. We have also received some information from Mr. Stoffer. I know you have a number of questions that you've addressed to council. And then, we've also received some information from Diane McBay, and that has been posted to the council members' shared website. So, what we'll do first is have the discussion amongst, just like any other committee meeting night, have a discussion on this particular topic amongst council members. We will open it up for three-minute comments from audience members, if they would like to make comments on this that add to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Crowe.
Should we let this all remain, or shall we split into our committees?
This is the planning and development. You're right, thank you, good, good. And what, what I'd suggest is, council members can be identified, if you know you're going to have a question or a comment, that you can come up to the podium immediately. Thank you. And I'd suggest you sit in the front, so you'll have an easy access to the.
They're all sitting in the back.
You can sit here.
Okay. So, first on our agenda is discussing short-term rentals. This has been preceded by a lot of discussion and talk because of the concurrent planning commission process that they're going through right now with the needed zoning for, that accompanies the short-term rental licensing. So, what I'm going to talk about this evening is the license that will be required if and when the regulations go into effect for short-term rental. Short-term rental is defined as 30 days or less, that you can go and rent a room out or a bode for 30 days or less. So, it's not rental, it's not a normal rental that people think of when they go and move in, you know? These are more, your Airbnbs, vacation rentals, could be once-in-a-while rentals that people do when they just have their house that's, all the kids are gone and they do something. So, it really runs the gamut. Right now, there's a lot of gray area and a lot of confusion in the regulations that we have concerning bed and breakfasts, short-term rentals, home stays, those sort of things. So, we have, as a city and a chair of the Planning Development Committee, and we're working with Paul Logue and Lisa Elias, and we've put together the following regulations and definitions to help make it a much more regulated, purposeful process, so that people know their expectations and their obligations under such rules and regulations if they go forward. So, basically, it will be a license that people would get for certain different types of short-term rents. We did the license instead of just going through the planning commission through the zoning code, because a license has a lot of other things that are part of it that doesn't make sense in a zoning code. Requirements for how to pay taxes, requirements for different types of identification, and paperwork to get certain types of licenses, bonding or insurance that are required. So, that, that doesn't make sense in the zoning code. The license also can be updated a lot quicker to see if there's things that are working really well, we can expand it to include the, the things that we've seen works well in other communities, or things that people really like in our community, but can be better. So, that's why it's a license. So, I think basically, the easiest thing to do would be a general description of what the licenses would be. So, basically, and we can bring up the, the table, table one. There's two different types of licenses. There's a license that's an A and a license that's a B. Licenses for A are required in all B zones and R3 zones. R1 and R2, R2 zones need to have B licenses. So, each license allows the different type of home, of rental, different type of rental in different types of area. So, for example, bed and breakfast is only allowed in the B zones and the R3 zones. They're allowed to have guest room limit of four guest rooms with two adults max. They have the regulations, meaning special regulations, they're under the just general regulations, they don't have anything. They're the base that I looked at, because they're the ones that are already in B zones or, and they have the lowest impact potential for neighborhoods or other businesses, those sort of thing. There might be a kitchen for the guests to use. The parking is per zoning requirement for that zone, and it would need an A license. It could not get a B license, because Bs are only for R1s and R2s. So, it would not be allowed. Bed and breakfast are not allowed in R1s or R2 areas. The next one up is homestay. You can have a homestay in any of the zones. So, if you live maybe on Court Street, maybe you have your business in the bottom and a couple extra rooms on the top, you could run a homestay, you know? Homestay is defined as when you are in your home and you rent out a maximum of two bedrooms, two guests to come and stay. So, that's very much like a traditional bed and breakfast that you would have in Europe. A lot of people do this. I stay in a lot of, of home stays, and it's, it's very popular, especially in college towns where we like to get to know people and are very, we have lots of fun people who come for a lot of fun activities. So, that's the homestay. Homestays have a maximum of two adults per room, maximum of, there's no kitchen for guests, parking is per zoning, and it would need an A permit or a B permit in the R1 or R2 zoning. Now, there's a nonprofit section here. We have been approached just numerous times by different nonprofits. I'll use the Habitat for Humanity as an example, because they came to me last year. They would like to do, as they do in other communities, do a home-to-home stay. Basically, on the big weekends that there are a dearth of places to stay in Athens, they want to be able to have hosts, volunteer hosts, open up their room, open up their house, two possibilities for parents to come in and stay that graduation weekend. The hosts would pay the transient guest tax. The money that the visitors spent would be given to Habitat for Humanity for their fundraiser. This particular one, the license for the nonprofit, you have to be a 501(c)(3) organization. You have to fulfill all the regulations for those home stays. That license, you can have 10 guest hosts. You have 84 guest nights, which is one person per night, per room, you know? So, two people stay overnight, that's two guest nights. They have a total of 84 guest nights for the whole license. So, if they have 10 people and they run it out for one weekend, like the big graduation weekend, they wouldn't really be doing any other of that type of fundraiser until the next year, because they would have gotten very close to their 84 guest nights with all 10 of those rooms. They don't have kitchens, and it's the B, once again, in R1 and R2, it's the B license. The last is the tourist home. Tourist home is three bedrooms. It's your traditional, when you think of a house on Airbnb, you know, you have your, your roommates from grade school come and watch your son graduate, sort of things. Those sort of, there's the whole house, the kitchen, everything. It can have up to three bedrooms with two people per room, two adults per room. It may have, it does have a kitchen, because it would be a full house. The special regulations for the tourist homes, because they're the ones that need to have the most assurances about being a good neighbor, is that the owner-operator has to have the primary residence of the person who is running the tourist home within 250 feet radius of the, of their tourist home. Basically, you're next door or two houses down from the place that you're running. This is in R1 and R2. The parking would be per zone, just like in the homestay. That's just a typo there. Also, people who have a tourist home can only have one license for a tourist home at a time. So, you're not getting somebody popping up six places around their house to run its tourist homes. So, that's the basic idea behind the licenses. They're basically structured after three general ideas, being a good neighbor, which are regulations and expectations put forward for accountability between the homeowners, operators, the guests, and the community around. You know, it's expected that people have, are good guests. Some of the ways that we ensure that, especially in R1 and R2 areas, that they're good guests is either they're living, they're in the room, in the house, with the hosts themselves, as in a homestay, or they're pretty much next door to the person who's running them, the tourist home. So, there's eyes on the ground right there about what's going on. Another way, especially for tourist homes, have extra regulation, is that under the planning commission process that's going through, planning commission right now, they would also have to be permitted by the BZA. And so, there's more eyes on that particular tourist home than even a rental would have. Rentals do not have to go before the BZA. There's other ways of limiting impacts for neighbors, and that is all in. There's other ways of limiting impacts for neighbors, and that is all in the different room limits, size of rooms, other regulations that they have to follow, such as all the housing code, and those different sort of accountability measures. They would have to have, any of the different short-term rentals have to have a first-year inspection with the home inspection, and then once when they do a renewal of their license, they would get a fire and life inspection. So there's two different types of inspection that all home stays, tourist homes, and bed and breakfasts are going to be going under. So there's multiple steps for people to be able to learn about, especially a tourist home, because of the BZA process, going through that planning process right now. So I think basically, that's pretty much in a nutshell, right? I did put together a table with some of the kind of frequently asked questions. So, questions?
Councilmember McGee.
It seems to me that with your proposal for the tourist home, since you're not limiting the number of nights per year that a person would be staying, you're basically saying to somebody, if you want to buy a house within this proximity to where you're living, you can turn it into basically a hotel for that point in time. Am I right?
It would be a short-term rental, which is different than a hotel.
Well, I understand that, but as a practical matter.
Right.
It's a short-term rental, but I mean, what you're doing is allowing somebody to take their house and make it basically, I mean, as a practical matter, a hotel. And I'm a little bit concerned with that right now when we're limiting some of the others to certain nights.
The only one is the nonprofit, that's the only one. And that they, other places that do this sort of nonprofit, short-term rentals, they put a night limit on it. It's just kind of best management practices. Does that make sense?
Well, it makes sense, but I really want to emphasize that, from my perspective, having lived on Morris Avenue and experienced the impact of basically an unregulated tourist home, you might say in some ways, it does have an impact on the neighborhood. If you're, if you are going to open this up to encourage people to invest in a, if there's a house next door, they can invest it in it and turn it into a money-making scheme. I mean, that's what we're doing, basically. It will have an impact on the neighborhood.
Right. And at one point, I would argue at one level, if you have that next-door neighbor house because of demographic changes, turn into a rental. And there would be, you wouldn't even know it, you wouldn't know that that house turned into a rental until the U-Haul truck came up. This process would put a lot more regulations on that sort of process. And when you talk about impact nights, like the guest nights, a normal three-person rental has more than 1,000 guest nights for a year's rental. And that's not even including all the parties and all the people who come and go, and so those sort of things. So having a tourist home that's 100% occupied for 100% of the time is probably not going to happen in Athens. One of the people who came had an occupancy rate of 11%. So I would think, I would, with the increased amount of regulations, that there would be less impact than actually, so.
I do have a concern that there's kind of a contrary push here. On one hand, we're encouraging, you know, to open up the housing market to families and to low-income people, and, well, not low-income people, to citizens. And on the other hand, I think what we're doing here is to also encourage people to maybe invest and use the business aspect of it. And I see that as something we need to be aware of.
Right.
You know, and at least it causes me concern, I want to address that.
Yeah. Councilmember Grace.
To that point, I think that if there's someone who has the financial resources to purchase a home that becomes available next door to them because they want a business investment, that they would do that right now and make it a regular rental property. And I think the amount of income that you would bring in from making it a regular rental property is going to greatly exceed what you would get from making it a tourist home. So I don't see that it's very likely, given the costs of real estate and the relatively low demand for short-term stays. I mean, it's just like, we have hotels in Athens that are only full on big weekends. So it's, there's not likely, I don't believe, to be a sudden increase in demand for short-term rentals, whether it's in a hotel room or in a tourist home. So if someone had the financial resources to buy one, I, like, to me, it doesn't actually seem like a financial investment that someone would make to turn something into a tourist home. It seems more likely, like, to, because I just, I don't see them being occupied very often for short-term stays. I think if there was a home that someone wanted to buy next door to their residence, they're probably more likely to turn it into a traditional rental home unless it's just because they want and have the resources to sort of have more control over their immediate surroundings, and they want to have a guest home that they could have available for a family who comes into town, but also they can make a little bit of income off of it on big weekends, which I just, it seems like a rare occurrence. Like, it doesn't seem likely to happen a lot that people would buy a home to turn it into a short-term rental.
Councilmember Reisner, have you have a comment?
Since right now the university is, has declining enrollment and they're cutting back, and there's fewer students to go into off-campus housing, and I'm driving around the neighborhoods and I'm seeing a lot of for-rent signs, I'm just wondering if the people who now own those homes that can't be rented as rentals full-time might be tempted to say, "Well, I still have to pay the mortgage, I still have to pay the property taxes, maybe I'll try the tourist home business, see how that would work out." It's something to keep it going until maybe the situation turns around.
I think something in other communities and here, because from what I hear from all the people who've been letting me know their aspirations and discussions, is that it provides, especially in areas where housing is relatively expensive, we don't have rent control, so, you know, looking at studies that talk about rent control or changes in those sort of things, don't, they don't apply to Athens. Athens has the unique experience of having 70% rentals. If this provides, like in other areas, people who are able to stay because they're, you know, seniors, and now they're empty nesters, and it's really hard to sell your house right now on Morris Avenue, there's like seven houses for sale. And if they, they may turn it into a rental and then they leave, or maybe they rent out two of their rooms 10 weekends a year when all the students are in, and be able to make it a go and be able to stay in that house. So I think that there are community benefits when it comes to these sort of things, and especially because Athens is so different than a lot of the other communities that have been having issues. The other thing with a lot of the communities that had issues is that they were playing keep-up. You know, it's just like the e-scooters. We were out in front, we have regulations, so now the people are, they know what is expected of them, and if they don't follow the rule, then they get, you know, their hand slapped or a fine, or their license taken. So areas that don't have the regulation or who have weaker regulation, like you can have 15 home stays and four tourist homes anywhere in, you know, the nine-county area, which some regulations are like, then that's where you get a lot of problems.
I want to open it up, do we have council members who have any comments or questions, other who are not, don't serve on the committee? Feel free to come on up to the podium.
Do you need me to sign in?
We know where to find you.
Okay, yes. Thank you. And I did want to, I don't say this very often, but echo some of the things that Member McGee said. And so mostly because, you know, I think of sense of community. And if you have a lot of people just coming and going all the time, you know, if you have a long-term rental, you have the opportunity to, you know, meet that person when they're taking their trash out, you know, every Tuesday or Wednesday or whenever that day is. And so, you know, I feel like, at least right now, when we're looking at the overall, you know, home stay versus tourist home, I look at the city and I look at the different zones, and I really, I really feel like protection of R1 is paramount. I'm just, I'm a little stuck on the idea of having a tourist home in R1, especially when we just got through this whole conversation of affordable housing, and now we're talking about having the opportunity to maybe lose a few more houses because of this new opportunity. Can we protect specific zones just a little bit more and maybe not go full, you know, full bore in this direction?
Other council members, Councilmember Crowell.
Could I ask Councilmember Kotsas a question? When you say protecting the R1 zones, are you saying all R1 zones within the city, are you talking sort of an overlay on the R1s? That it would be okay in some R1s but not in all R1s?
I would, I would say, I mean, my thought as I was, you know, looking at this and thinking about this over the last, you know, few weeks, no tourist homes in R1, just across the board.
Across the board.
Across the board.
I see.
And then I feel like that does retain, you know, kind of what people wanted when they moved into an R1. You know, and R2 is a little bit different.
Right, right.
You have, you know, you have different type of housing there, you know, so maybe there's an opportunity to expand and move it slowly in this direction, but not, but not just kind of do everything at once.
I think I agree with you.
Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. I'd like to echo Councilmember Kotsas's comments, and I too am concerned about this in R1 zone. I also have a question for Member Fall. You mentioned if you had a business on Court Street, you could rent out properties upstairs, but not if it wasn't your home, correct?
No, in a business zone, it's different. It's, you're not required to be, just as now you are not required to be living in that house, but you have to be managing, you have to have a manage. That's what we do with B zones right now. In R3.
And my other question was, I don't know this for a fact, but I've heard that some of the larger apartment complexes in town are also not filled. Would there be anything that would allow them to rent out a room for a weekend under this? Could they, could the summit declare 20 rooms?
Well, there are room sizes and room limits, so they would have to, in order to be, what they're in educational, or let's say they're in R3, they have room limits for a bed and breakfast, which is four. So they could potentially chop it up into 100 different four-unit businesses that would have to be owned separately by people, but I guess you could do that. I don't think that would happen.
I think it's something we should consider as we do deal with enrollment decreases, what will happen and how this will be interpreted.
Yeah, and that's a really good point. I know, that's a different, you know, there's also people who want to do, look at different models, and that may be a time to get some people into discussion about that, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. Did you have a question to ask Councilmember Crowell?
To say I have some concern over what was just said about the summit, because I think that if we're going to allow an apartment complex to turn into this major home stay or tourist.
But they couldn't, they, I mean, you could, you could not, right.
Under your example, but if we go there, what we're going there, I think we run the risk of really hurting our hotel industry because what we're doing at that point in time is basically creating miniature hotels.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not really even doable under this sort of thing. So, you know, it's not really an issue.
Councilmember Grace, did you have a comment pertinent to that comment?
I would just like to ask that after the council members have questions, that maybe Paige.
Okay.
Answer some of the questions as to the demand for nights.
Good idea. Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. I appreciate the spirited conversation and discussion because decisions we make today will definitely impact our communities as well as future generations of Athenians and visitors. Having said that, I've thought about this a bunch over the years, and had been approached a number of times, trying to wrestle with this, and was approached as well by folks who were predominantly in favor of moving forward towards short-term rentals and, for lack of a better word, Airbnbs. I've had fewer people approach me in opposition. I have had conversations with those people as well, too, and I think they make very valid points. Mr. Stouffer and I had a very, we had two or three spirited conversations about this as well, and I think those points need to be heard. It's a challenging conversation. When I think about my parents' generation, whenever my parents travel to communities, they're looking for hotels to stay in, they would never consider a short-term rental and Airbnb, they would never consider walking into a stranger's home, they would prefer bathrooms to be on the same floor as the bed that they're staying in. And that's my parents, and that's their generation. I think that as times are changing and people are getting more creative, I see definitely interest in self-determination and folks wanting to stay somewhere that they determine that's not a chain or not a hotel. I do like the idea of the hotel motel tax being applicable to these as well, I think that's wise. I do think that there's other communities that have been wrestling with this and have been proactive in creating legislation, and we need to continue to look into that. And I think Councilmember Fall has done her homework in trying to do so. I'm also mindful of a conversation I heard a few years back at a funeral in which a gentleman speaking about his deceased brother was referencing a story from years ago, growing up poor in the post-war era, and thinking about families taking in extra renters to help, you know, pay the bills, you know, sort of similar to victory gardens in the front yard, and doing what can be to make ends meet. On a certain level, we are experiencing some similar economic challenges and strife today. We have and have nots, the 1%ers far outweigh those of us making ends meet. So I can see some practicality about this. You know, Athens has also wrestled for years and years and years, losing, you know, sort of a brain drain, whether it's our young students graduating from the area and not attending university, and/or our faculty leaving as they retire. If there's a potential to keep a few more faculty around because they can use this as a means to help pay bills, it is an interesting conversation. I don't have all the answers, I haven't determined how I would vote on this as of yet, but I do think that the conversation is needed, and brighter minds than mine have had input, and I welcome more input. Thank you.
Paige, would you offer us some information?
Hi, I'm Paige Ilos, with the Athens County Visitors Bureau. I'm happy to entertain any questions that you have, but I think it's really important to note that the most important reason that we're taking up this conversation is for the conversation that we had just before this about the mountain bike trail. 181,000 visitors, we project that roughly 20% of those are going to stay overnight, that's 36,000 people. that's 36,000 people. You're going to be paying for that if you move forward with it, with your TGT. What this offers is a framework that sort of levels the playing field for all people that are engaged in lodging, so whether you're engaged from a commercial standpoint, operating a hotel or a bed and breakfast, or if you are engaging in the peer-to-peer economy. This is a way to ensure that when a visitor comes, that they have a safe experience, that they have a somewhat regulated experience, that you're able to collect the tax, and that you know which properties exist that are engaging in the peer-to-peer economy, that they're not operating as a commercial business. First and foremost, and we say it daily in our office, tourism is a byproduct of good community development. So this framework gives you a chance to develop what you want in your neighborhoods and what you're willing to accept in your neighborhoods, and it allows you to grow. But this is the time to have this conversation right now, because of what could be coming around the bend with you in the next two or three, or seven, or 10 years, as other things begin to grow here. We pointed out, yes, OU may be looking at dwindling enrollment now, but they, they may hit a boom again here in the next couple of years. The mountain bike trail, the motorcycle trails, what we offer in outdoor recreation, proximity to the Hocking Hills, these are all things that make it important to sort of engage in this conversation. When we talk about demand, and we've had this conversation, especially with those who have reached out to our office to ask questions about this, this is not necessarily about demand as it looks right now, but it's an important conversation to have. Right now, in Athens, we probably hover around the 75% occupancy rate on an annual basis. I will tell you, it takes a lot more than 12 peak weekends out of the year to keep a hotel open. We do sell out on a regular basis here. By sell out, I mean, we're probably in the 87% occupancy range, where we have the majority of our properties selling out, not all of them selling out, still a few rooms available. That happens quite often, truly between March and about the 1st of December are really peak for us. There are many weekends in the course of the summer where it is difficult to find a room. So the demand during certain times does exist. It's not all the time right now, but I want to encourage you to take up the conversation and begin to talk about what you want in your neighborhoods. Talk about density, talk about proximity, talk about how many on a street. Try not to speculate, try to just anticipate what kind of business is going to come your way. One thing that we do know is that visitors, by and large, right now, they want a diverse range of prices and options, and that's the best that we can do for them right now, is to offer a variety of options. That peer-to-peer economy is here, and I would encourage you to really take this opportunity to address it. If you don't address it now, you're going to have to address it when you have 50 properties show up overnight. I'll give you an example, right now, if you go on Airbnb, there's 150 properties in Athens County alone, about 100 of them operate as whole-house rentals. And in some of those cases, those properties will allow you to rent one room at a time, or you can rent the entire property. I would also encourage you to look within the city of Athens in those R1 zones and see what is operating now. Some of them are, are single-room rentals, and some of them are full tourist home rentals. I would encourage you to talk with the auditor, who can talk with you about which properties are actually on the TGT list right now. And we do have a handful of properties in the city that operate under these guidelines that we do work very closely with, and we're very proud of those properties. Someone asked me, you know, well, a tourist home could turn into a party house. Well, speculation, I mean, it could turn into a party house, I can't assure that every person who visits is going to, you know, be mature and well-rested, but our hotels struggle with the same thing as well. The important thing to remember, this is not an easy business, y'all, this is, this is taking care of people every day. And so if you're operating a tourist home, it is like operating a full-time lodging establishment. So it is hard work, going through the permitting process is not daunting, but it will definitely weed out those who aren't willing to meet certain regulations, to keep their guests safe and keep the, the playing field level. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I'll be honest with you, I've had a number of neighbors who have contacted us about information on this, and it's interesting to hear their point of view. It's interesting to have a conversation about demand and what we need right now versus what we may need honestly, and it could be a year or two and the tables could turn, so.
Question. In your opinion, what is the most popular, most in-demand, the tourist home, or the homestay, or the bed and breakfast?
Probably the tourist home. We do see a lot of people who contact us who are looking for whole-home rentals. And like I said, we have a number of them that are operating here, you can actually go onto Airbnb or VRBO and see their availability, so you can see how busy they are.
You're talking about the ones in the county?
Yes.
Okay.
And we do get requests, we have people who, who contact us or email us who want something that is in close proximity to Uptown Athens, and so that walking distance is important. Now with that said, I had a conversation with a local resident who brought that up, and just because that's what a consumer demands does not necessarily mean that that's what a consumer gets. You know, to me, the residents' rights and what this community decides that they want to do with this concept is extremely important to our future relationships with visitors. We don't want to create some adversarial relationship between people who visit here and people who live here. We're seeing that happen in other places, please read the information about Asheville, North Carolina, granted, their problems are millions of dollars bigger than ours, but the scale is different, but the concept is the same. And so I would encourage you to, you know, really look at this legislation as an opportunity to, to engage in the peer-to-peer economy and regulate it, and provide safe lodging as best as you can, but also balance that with what, what your residents want, what your neighbors want. It's, it's hard to anticipate.
Councilmember McGee?
Thank you. You had mentioned, I believe, 100 or 150 houses are currently county-wide. From my perspective, I appreciate the fact that you called our attention to the possible impact of the Bailey's Trail. I think that's very important, but I also think it's a national issue, which is student debt, and unless that's relieved in the coming year, or a year after the coming year, I think our economy is kind of in freefall. But if it is relieved, I think at some point in time, there are going to be a lot more young families looking for homes to buy-
Right.
And we might actually have some neighborhoods, again, where we have neighbors.
Right.
I mean, my concern is that we basically pull that rug out from under that happening, because we've turned all these homes into businesses which are lucrative because of Bailey's Trail. So it's kind of a conflict there.
I see where you're going with that, but it's, it's a big county out there, and there are, like I said, you know, if you set your regulations here, then what, what happens outside of the city of Athens will, will sort of pick up that extra business. And we've seen it happen over the course of the last year, I mean, we've grown 100 properties just on Airbnb alone in the course of the last year, outside of the county, and a few within, or outside of the city, but also a few within the city limits as well, so. Our hope, in all honesty, is that perhaps somebody does open up a room, or perhaps they buy and operate a tourist home, and they fall in love with the business, and it spurs a true commercial business in the city that meets a need for visitors, that then begins to employ people, that adds something additional to the local economy. That's our greatest hope for what happens here. But to me, the most important reason to consider it is sort of just being ready for the wave of change in consumer needs and wants, and also being ready for the opening of the Bailey system and changes at OU. I'd encourage you, it's not necessarily about demand right now, but it's not always going to be that way.
Thank you.
You can always call me if you have more questions, Tim, I'm happy to, happy to-
I appreciate you taking the time.
Yeah.
Thanks. Other questions or comments from any council members, or the mayor, or the auditor? Then I'd like to open it up, do we have comments from audience members, if you'd like to come up and speak? Make any comments? Mr. Stover, welcome tonight, thank you, I'll set the timer for three minutes, once you've started.
The lady who previously spoke did a very nice job, she's a nice public speaker, I heard everything she said, and, let me just try to read this. I would like to address the resolution of R-0819 and the ordinance draft that I've tried to understand. First of all, I want to talk about the short-term rentals, of course, I want to talk about tourist homes. I am not against commerce. I was in business for myself for 31 years in the plumbing business, I've been a landlord in this town for 32, 3, 4, 5 years. Commerce is a great thing. I'm not here to speak against commerce, I'm not here to talk about pie in the sky where we might have 180,000 visitors sometime in the future. I'm here to talk about Athens, Ohio, and the R1 zones. Some of the stuff I'm about ready to say, I've said before, I'm going to say it again because I think it needs to be heard. I've done my best to try to communicate properly, I know I'm allowed, not allowed to ask questions at regular city council meetings, I have reached out to every city council person, I have heard absolutely not a peep out of anybody on this committee sitting up here in front of me. I don't like being ignored, and I don't like being abused, and I don't like being taken advantage of. I've definitely been ignored, and I don't like being taken advantage of. And to let these tourist homes come into R1, I think is absolutely wrong, and not in the best interest of the city, not in the best interest of the R1 zones. R1 is R1. I'm going to go ahead and try to read this.
You do have 42 seconds left.
Ma'am, at the last, at the last committee meeting, I saw you let a lady stand up here for six minutes and speak.
Then you can have-
I just saw you let this lady speak.
Then you can have six minutes.
Thank you very much, I'll get started.
You, you have three minutes down now, you've got three more minutes.
I struggle with public speaking, don't mistake the tone of my voice, it is that I am upset and passionate, not angry. Frustration would be my situation, not anger, but frustration and passion, for my hometown, my neighborhood, my neighbors, as well as myself. It's been mentioned that this is to raise money for people who need the money. I'm no lawyer, but I do know that when something goes in front of the boarding zone of appeals, that they are not allowed to consider money as a hardship, so I don't think, I think you need to think about this. These are just, these are random thoughts in no particular order. I think the tourist home should be banned, period. Six people, you only allow three unrelated people in any neighborhood at this time, and these, like, these are people that would be living next to you in a rental, that you could get to know and have a relationship with, and gain a little respect for each other. When you're having weekend guests, you don't have that opportunity. As I previously mentioned, you could have your, any of these things in your B zones, in your R3 zones, in your R2 zones, and I say this with reluctance, but only out of desperation, you could have your bed and breakfast or guest houses, not the tourist home, in your R1 zones on the major thoroughfares as they pass through the R1 zones, but not infiltrating down into the neighborhoods where the old folks and the pets and the kids are. I've even had occasion recently to speak to David Cornwell, and he told me that his hotel was on hold until he sees how good Mr. Procos does down there. So that tells me he may see some sort of an impact. Have you folks talked to all the hotels out there? I don't know, I haven't had a conversation with anybody, because nobody's talking. You folks should be defending our existing property rights and not attempting to give them out of poor judgment or for political gain. I know you want to seem progressive, but taking existing property rights from 90-some percent of the people to give a few to 5% of the people or less is not in the best interest of our community. We are not asking for political favors, we are begging you not to take from many to give to a few the property rights that we currently enjoy. Athens is not your typical tourist town, people come here to party, which is fine, but R1 is R1, and most citizens, if they, if and when they become aware of what you're trying to do, I'm quite sure would not agree with this current effort on your part.
Mr. Stover, can you try and summarize, please?
Yep, in a minute, in a minute or so, thank you. I know you were elected by a majority of the people, and I always thought you were here to represent and defend a majority of the people, not special interests. The way the law is written, 11.13.05, legal residents, 51% of the time or greater, completely unenforceable, completely unenforceable. The code office isn't even open on the weekends, and it's understaffed. Then you're asking us to start trusting the people who are currently cheating the system? They're out there operating, it's illegal, they're not paying their transit tax, they're probably not paying their federal, state, or city tax on those monies. Now we're going to depend on them to treat us fairly in the future? I would say that's questionable. One hotel owner who I've spoke to recently said, what they're trying to do is get the people into the hospitality business. The hospitality business is business, business should be conducted in a business zone. I believe this will push down real estate prices and desirability. Have we had, have we had a survey from all the realtors in town, what they think this might do? I've also talked to a local businessman recently, who is anticipating possibly building a hotel in the future within walking distance to Uptown, maybe the American touch on that, I'm not sure. I also don't think that the nonprofits should have any more rights, or be given any more rights, by taking rights away from the people that are currently owning property in R1, who got a certain set of property rights with that property.
We appreciate your comments, thanks so much for being here tonight. Is there anybody else who has any comments? Yes, and that was Mr. Stover, and your address, just so we have it for the record, is-
Elmwood.
Elmwood, Elmwood Street, thank you.
Mary Abel, 48, Strathmore, I have a question on the homestay, it says there is no permit or no allowance for a kitchen for a guest, and I'm wondering why that is?
I think that, from the literature, it's more a safety issue, it's also making sure that it is, just it's a different type of experience. And so homestays, most of the time, homestays are done, very kind of family-oriented sort of thing, so.
Well, just to me, I mean, people's, even if it's a homestay, even in most hotel rooms, you have a refrigerator and a microwave.
Yes, it says, it says a stove, and there's certain definitions of what a full-fledged kitchen is. So they may have a hot pot, or like a instant kettle and a mini refrigerator, but they're not going to have the whole stove and oven and all those sort of things that you would associate with a house.
Okay. Then regarding the tourist homes in R1s, most people that I have spoken to in R1s really do not want the concept of having a tourist home in an R1. They have purchased the home in an R1 because it's a family in a residential area, and they're really much more open to having bed and breakfast that our owner occupied, more viable, but the tourist home, because it does operate as a viable, similar to a hotel business, is just one of the things that they feel, if they bought in an R1 area, then they want to live in an R1 area and not to have businesses in that particular residential zone. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for your comments. Anybody else who wants to make a comment? Zach, come on up. If you could give us your name and address, and you've got three minutes.
Okay, my name is Zach Rises. I live at Seven Atlantic Avenue, which is just off of Richland Avenue. I am also the token renter on the Affordable Housing Commission established by the council. And I actually came up to voice concerns as well, which makes us maybe bedfellows, but, but my concerns are actually the opposite in that I'm shocked and frustrated at how little conversation has taken place regarding the interplay and overlap between opening up the city to Airbnbs in various forms and affordable housing. There's, there's two corrections that I'd like to make. The first is that the gentleman who spoke before suggested that he thinks that Airbnbs will bring housing prices down in a residential neighborhood. And if you are to do a quick Google search, Airbnb housing, Airbnb affordable housing, article after article after article shows the same research, because there are many places in which this research has been done. Says the people who experienced the greatest positive impact from Airbnb opening up are homeowners, and the people who experienced the greatest, greatest negative impact are renters. And sitting on the Affordable Housing Commission and given a lot of the conversation that's taking place in this city at large, we're aware that affordable housing is at the forefront of the minds of people in this city, many of whom, 70, somewhere between 70 and 80 percent of whom are renters, given who you ask. Now, I really do applaud the work that's been put into making this, to developing a plan that would allow us to open ourselves up to Airbnbs in a way that doesn't impact rental units or one that protects our communities, as has been mentioned multiple times. But the other correction that I mentioned that I wanted to make is that it is not more profitable to run a long-term rental. A short-term rental is more profitable, and there is question about demand at the present time, but if you're able to rent it out multiple times a year, that higher rent that those short-term renters are paying adds up to significantly more than what a long-term renter is going to be paying. And so, the result, I fear, is that in a small community where we already have a shortage of affordable housing or affordable rental units, and that's a concept, right, in the minds of those renters, if we see more of those rental units pulled off the market to become short-term rentals, those costs are only going to go up. Right now, the decrease in enrollment means that potentially prices go down, but if there's the opportunity opened up for that kind of short-term rental housing, that might not be the case. It could be the opposite. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'll sign it real quick.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you. Second on our agenda is a planning commission suggestion. Requirement, well, it's a suggestion.
Recommendation.
Recommendation, thank you. About changing the north part of Court Street into a B2D zone, as opposed to what it is right now.
B3.
B3, thank you. Most of the changes between B2, B2D versus B3 have to do with where the parking is located and what type of parking is required, and also the number of feet and stories that a building can have. Those are the two major things. It's what will happen if this does indeed pass is that the parking garage, as it is now for part of the Court Street, B2D, part of the Court Street, can use the parking garage as their requirement for their business for off-street parking. And that would extend it up to Carpenter Street. So that's pretty much the differences. So, would you like to add anything?
I would love to add something to that. So council, you have before you, hopefully, on your drive, a lot of the history behind the rezoning of North Court Street, which actually started in 1994. And most recently, I believe it was 2010. And the main issues at the time were storage, parking, and noise. As council is well aware, the city has a noise ordinance that can be acted upon and often is. As a matter of fact, this past weekend, I believe the count was in the 30s of responses to nuisance noise. And then the city has the 24-hour parking, which we've had an effect for quite some time as well. And now you can go down to the code office and get a permit to where it gives you some relief in the, in certain areas of the city to be able to keep your car parked on the street for 72 hours. I would also draw council's attention in your, your, the documents you've got on your Google Drive to the area that is, was recommended by the planning commission for the, what is currently B3 and being rezoned, recommendation to B2D. And I'll tell, give you a little background on that as well. So this did go through the planning commission. The planning commission voted for, in your notes, you had, it reads as four with one abstention. It was, was actually an interesting vote that I've never heard of before. It was a vote of ambivalence. And I asked at least once to say, you can do that. But anyway, so that was the vote, to move this forward. And the rezoning, again, so I'll give you the clef note version of the difference between a B3 and a B2D zone is, as Councilmember Fall just mentioned, is that it, it removes the parking requirement for the retail on the first floor. It doesn't do anything about the parking needed for apartments above. You still have to meet those requirements for parking above, so it's just for the retail space. And there's a great document in your drive. It's a document to city council from the Athens City Planning Commission with the recommendation dated October 10th, 2019. And what I would like to point out is a couple items in here. There's some bullets. This recommendation is consistent with several, several sitting planning, city planning documents, including the following. The city's comprehensive plan Phase 2 Uptown Athens Plan, found on page 2-45, as it relates to encouraging pedestrian-centered development. The next bullet, 2018 Uptown Parking Study, and this one's really important to council, for council to consider, which found off-street parking occupancy rate on Court Street from State to Carpenter at 60%. So right there, there's a lot of vacant parking spaces for those retail storefronts to have people pull up and be able to go into the establishment, at least during the parking enforcement period. And that's typically when they're open, is during that period. The 2018 Uptown Athens Active Transportation Plan, which states the current division between B2D and B3 zoning has created a disconnect in land uses where a suburban standard, which is what a B3 zone is, by the way, is a suburban plan. It encourages, it puts car transportation first, walking, biking.
Sorry.
It says bedtime.
Are you setting the tone for the rest of my talk?
I have to take my heart medicine.
Oh, no.
I don't have work.
Suburban standards are applied within a district that already functions as a traditional downtown district. Down, uptown area, if you think about it, council, from, from, really from Baker Center on Court Street all the way up to Carpenter, it currently acts as a, as a urban downtown area. It is. And a, an urban downtown area, you want that area to be strong in active transportation with pedestrians, bicycles, like them or not, and we don't have them yet, e-scooters. And, but cars are far down on that list for an urban downtown area. It's not the primary mode. We also have a very active transportation system, transit system with Athens Public Transit, which we talked about earlier tonight. So if you think of all of the area that is highlighted on your map here, that's in your deck, you know, this is really just providing space that's consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's consistent with our active transportation efforts. It's consistent with the, with the Athens Sustainability Action Plan. That's in there, too. That plan speaks to development or develop, building and zoning standards that focus on bicycle and pedestrian orientation rather than automobile orientation. And if you think about this, too, that is one ways in which we can be our, be responsible stewards of our planet from a carbon emissions standpoint to where if we're getting fewer cars on Court Street, we're able to come up, as opposed to people riding or bike, walking, pedestrians, whatever, that's a good thing, in my mind.
I, I think one of the things that, at the planning commission discussion, and I think this is when you think about bad, you know, the inner-city cores that are so sad, I mean, they were hollowed out, being made into parking lots. And so you, you don't get that nighttime urbanization, you don't, they don't feel safe. Somebody called them, and they're like missing teeth, and you don't feel safe walking by big parking lots. And we do have those along Court Street, you know, where Cornwell's, and those sort of things are. So I think that anything we can do to put cars way down here is, is a good thing. I think it's better land use planning there, and it will, I think, help to make much more of a cohesive uptown area. So many people are kind of like, walk up to where the gas station is, and they go, oh, well, where'd I end? And then they turn around, and that shouldn't be, it should be the whole street, so. Questions?
Councilmember Wiki.
I would like to thank the mayor for the explanation, because I, I think it was a very good explanation, and it cleared up some things for me. I would only suggest that as we're saving the planet through our carbon footprint, that we perhaps include some more bike racks for city council members who actually do ride their bikes to city meetings, so I would appreciate that.
And do we have any comments from council members? Yes, if you'd like to, or questions, come on up.
Thank you. I'm 100% behind the reasons for, when it comes to alternative transportation and parking. But thanks to the clerk, we have the whole history of this issue, and what's not been discussed here is that in the past, the issue has been that that zone was something of a buffer between what we call uptown and the near-north side neighborhood. So how do you address that question of whether a buffer is needed or how this will change the businesses that might come into that north end of town for that, the near-north side hills?
For me, I would repeat what I said earlier with the intent for a B2D versus a B3 in that to encourage active transportation in ways in which people are going to come into it. You don't need a buffer anymore between there and, say, the north here, North Hill neighborhoods, because now you're encouraging some economic development on the ground floor, you know, first floor level, that people would likely, with greater frequency, use the steps that come down from Fort and walk into the uptown area because they could be, you know, shopping along whatever those storefronts would become.
Correct me if I'm wrong, sorry. This would incentivize more businesses on that end of Court Street, right, which might produce more noise into the, the near-north side?
Uh, it, well, it would create no more businesses, well, I mean, it could create some more businesses now.
Not that that's necessarily bad.
During the, during the 8 to 5 PM, when most of our businesses on Court Street are open, save the restaurants and the bars, you know, are they truly noisy? But if they were, again, we have a nuisance party ordinance where if there is excessive noise, they, you know, complaints can be lodged against those. You know, I, I will also, well, go ahead and ask any questions you may have.
That's really it. I mean, I'm just trying to channel what I read in the history of the reasons why this was not passed in the, in the past.
So let me, let me share with you, again, in encouraging more pedestrian and bicycling traffic, there's a way in which we can certainly reduce, reduce noise, you know, something that we failed to think about, and that is the din of traffic flowing anywhere in the city. But, you know, if we can somehow create an environment to where it is putting active transportation first, and we have more people walking from North Hill down to stores and whatnot, wouldn't that reduce noise?
Yeah, I think so. Having grown up on the North Hill and those who live on that side of town know that pretty much from the demolition derby to the OU ban to pretty much anything going on, you hear it up on those hills. So for the people that live there, any kind of noise, I agree, you might reduce your traffic noise, but it tends not to be, oh, we hear cars. It's, tends to be activities that go up the hill. So I'm just, I just don't know how, that's why I'm assuming the history of this move was based on that, and I'm just wondering if anything's changed. I'm all about the parking issue and moving to walking and biking, but.
Well, one of the things that this change would not do in terms of noise is it's not going to stop the sound from the demolition derby nor the sound from, from the marching 110 that is playing over at Peet and Stadium. I understand your concern, and I, again, would contend that this is not going to increase excessive noise because of a zoning change.
Isn't that what they said in the past, though? Isn't that why?
They did, and some of that was pre-noise ordinance, in terms of the, the noise ordinance, as it didn't exist, and then as it kind of came into existence, that, you know, there's ways in which noise can be mitigated, you know, via that ordinance. And again, the other issue was the storage parking. And, you know, I know that our parking enforcement gets out and regularly is looking. Again, it's not perfect. Is there still a car here and there that's, you know, maybe there longer than it should be? But again, I think we've made great strides when it comes to storage parking with what used to be cars sitting in neighborhoods for weeks, months, semesters, well, quarters, I guess, back in the day. But again, that has been largely rectified. And again, and I don't think that with this zoning change, where on the north block, the businesses that are there, you know, that you're going to start to see cars being storage parked in other places, you know, for what that business does, you know, there's, and there's more open parking meters, you know, on that end of Court Street, and not just Court Street, but State Street down by where the old, the former Athens bookstore used to be, where we have a number of parking spaces that are close into that area. They're often open. Okay, thank you. Yeah, you're welcome.
I'd like to just point out also with buffer, that there's many different types of tools that we can use in buffering, and that it's not just parking that helps to buffer neighborhoods. It's type of, you know, that would be a different vehicle than just the zoning code. There are other ways that we can deal with off-site noise and impacts. You know, design, design is really good in certain communities when you have to have certain types of outdoor activities, you have to have some kind of noise-dedening devices or awnings or those sort of things. So there's a lot of other opportunities to look at impacts, because it's not only buffering there, but it's buffering from Stimson, which is going to be increasing in, in businesses. It's going to be those other different types of buffering situations. So that's something I think that... of buffering situations. So that's something I think that the comprehensive plan has pointed out and that other processes and projects in the city have pointed out, that we need to look at the other tools than just zoning. Because that's pretty, that's like a hammer, you know, when you want something like a screwdriver.
Councilmember Grace.
I just with regard to what member Crowell was mentioning and being a resident of the near north side, we definitely hear the demolition derby. But I, and correct me if I'm wrong because I was not involved in this process years ago, but I think there were definitely concerns in that neighborhood about a restaurant at the corner of Court and Carpenter and the noise and the parking issues that might travel up the hill from that particular location. And I think that that is, was more of a concern because it faces the north side. And so I think that that might also be part of the historical context to the concerns. But I don't hear, in my home, I don't hear noises from Court Street locations, including like the ones there right at the very end. It, you know, I'm more likely to hear things from Congo Fest, or the fair, or the marching band. So just for that perspective.
Comment?
Great, thank you. I wanted to say first off, I'm a huge fan of demolition derby. And it's mostly because in my, you know, my day job, there's a battle cry that's been said for years, which is one less car. And that's probably about the only place that you can really kind of measure that result. But changing parking requirements, which I think is really what we're talking about here, when I think of, it's, parking requirements need to be reviewed and they need to be looked at and they need to be addressed. When we have on the books, the idea that a bedroom can be smaller than a parking space, that makes me wonder how much we value the person versus the vehicle. So those are kind of things that I think about. So it's, and, you know, member Crowell and I could probably get up here together and we could reminisce about when we were kids and all the things that used to be up on Court Street. And we could have a long conversation about why those aren't necessarily going to come back, but what can we do to encourage the next phase of business? And, you know, I think that this, it isn't the, just like everything, it's not the magic bullet, but it is, it's a step in the right direction. And so I also think about, you know, I think about our bus system, because not everybody is going to say, well, I'm not a pedestrian, I'm not a cyclist, I'm not, you know, that's not how I'm going to engage with that part of Court Street. But with our bus system and having those different modes of transportation, having that access where you don't have to think about bringing a vehicle uptown. Even our parking meters that we have now, that you can pull up an app and you can actually see where those free spots, where the empty spaces exist. I think we're making some changes in the right direction and I think this is just another one of them. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, this will come up next week. Okay. Last agenda item is, I was approached by some of community members and Steve has been thinking along the same line, is that to join with thousands of other communities across the nation to identify this particular day that's routinely known as Columbus Day, as a, to re-identify it as Indigenous Peoples' Day, to identify and the fact that we are visitors, long-term visitors, in what was their home when we first came. We haven't been very good visitors in a lot of ways. I think that identifying and knowing that we've had ancestors in the land, I think is really important, especially for us. We have so much around us that people talk about Mound Street, you know, the Plains has their Mound Festival, you know, the ancient earthworks, you know, points to a society and community that was really rich and amazingly diverse. And it's identification that we owe a huge amount of our fundamental truth and community spirit, a lot of ways, to what we've seen in Indigenous worlds. So, would you like to say anything? There is a weirdness about being able just to change. Of course, with the city being a statutory city, we can't do something unless Columbus specifically says that we can do it. So we will have to identify this day particularly every year so that we can put it in our various calendars and those sort of things. That's what I was led to believe by the law director. So, Steve?
And that could be, you know, annually, or maybe one proclamation where it goes on in perpetuity, where it's, we are recognizing this date as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
So, there's no vote or anything, but I think that it's important. And that's really important. Questions?
I would just like to add that I would be all for a resolution changing the name of the city of Columbus to Tecumseh, but I don't think that's on the agenda, but I think it would be appropriate.
I would be opposed to it. I'm sorry, I'm an amateur historian. I read a lot of deep history and I go to original sources. And I understand the bad press that Columbus is getting. And a lot of it was deserved, but a lot of the information that comes out about his role as governor general of Hispaniola was published mainly by the people who were really out to get his position. I mean, let's face it, the Spaniards really didn't care about the Indigenous people any more than anybody else. So the fact they were saying that he was nasty, I'm thinking, well, that's kind of like Cortez, Zarro.
We don't have days named after them.
Anyway, had my rant.
I just wanted to say that the city does not currently take, like, we're not closed today on Columbus Day. And so it's, the county offices and county court were closed today.
I didn't get any mail today.
It's a federal holiday.
It is a federal holiday, but the city floats it. So in terms of intention for identification or recognition, I don't know that, whether it would change to become a city holiday for city workers that is taken on this day. But that was just a question that came to my mind as far as if we're talking about this particular day.
But under our union contracts, we float this, don't we?
We do.
Okay. So this has no effect whether, what name it is, I mean, our employees still get the day?
They absolutely do. No, it's, as member Grace was saying, it's a floating holiday that we insert wherever and we set that calendar, the, you know, we'll be setting it pretty soon.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Okay, that's the end of my. All right, transportation. Councilmember Kotzis and McGee and Crowell.
Okay. The hits just keep coming. Thank you, everybody, for hanging in there. So yes, Transportation Committee tonight, we have three bullet points to speak about. Towing regulations, we have an ODOT-LPA agreement, and also the, also an update and for the Richland Bridge over Coates Run. So towing regulations, just a little bit of history, a little bit of background. This is going back to our Athens City Code, Chapter 7.06, specifically Point 17. And this was something that was set back on January 1st of 2002, where the rate was raised to $50 for towing of a vehicle from a public right-of-way and/or also a private lot within the city of Athens. And so since then, we actually had a court case that came forward where it was challenged because the Ohio Revised Code has raised that rate to $129. And we were waiting until we heard the outcome of that. That was settled out of court and we don't really know what the answer was to how that all happened. So since then, we've actually had now a second, I believe a second court case has now come, is starting to come forward or has come forward. I could not know it. You're retired now, so you probably don't get as much information. But the bottom line is, at this point, since it, and also that Student Senate has brought forth a resolution suggesting that the city raises the rate to $75, this prompted me to have a few more conversations. I spoke with a statewide towing organization and had some conversations with them, also with one of our local auto repair places. I was getting my car worked on and started quizzing them while I was waiting for that to happen because they own a couple wreckers and do towing and recovering services. And so after having these conversations, I'm comfortable bringing that fee up in line with what the state code is, has it listed at, at $129. And that is for vehicles under a gross weight of 10,000 pounds. Now, this would just be for if it was, if a vehicle, say, was parked for too long somewhere, it's not, it's not the rate that you would necessarily get if, say, you were in an accident or something like that. The recovery for something like that is more involved because they actually may have to drag the vehicle out of a ditch, you know, out of a lake or something like that. So the fees do not apply to that. This is only if you were saying a lot that was, a private lot that was posted. This would allow the operator to charge that amount. Or if the police needed to have a vehicle moved off of a street, this is also where that same pay, the same level would come into play. Now, some of the information that I was able to get talking with the Towing Association, basically, they have very high workers' comp rates because the average, the average loss of a person working in this industry is one, nationally, one every six days. So their workman's comp is extremely high, their insurance rates. One towing operator in Columbus who had 26 vehicles, they were $1.7 million per year in insurance. One of our local agents, one of our local businesses, over $17,000 per year in just insurance rates. And that's, so that does not include workman's comp. The other thing too is the price of the vehicles themselves. When you look at a, like a base tow truck, you know, something that has the hook on the back, you're looking at an $80,000 to $100,000 investment. If you go to a flatbed for moving vehicles that are four-wheel or all-wheel drive, you're starting at $120,000 to $200,000. So, you know, the investment in a vehicle that immediately depreciates, you know, fairly rapidly, I just, I see this as a fairly expensive business to take part in. To the point where we only have, we have three towing companies within the city. One of them, only one of them still patrols lots. The rest of them just come as needed bases. So when the city has an issue, they will rotate between three different businesses and call each one, you know, in a rotation. So those were kind of the things that I came up with as I was, as I was kind of working through this, this issue that keeps popping up. The other thing I would want to also mention is that I did receive an email from Tom Pyle today, who's also in agreeance that, and I can't remember if it was repeal what we currently have or just change, but regardless, he was in agreeance that we needed to change this and equalize it with what's at the state level. So, member Crowell?
Just so I understand correctly, because I can't keep track of all the ways in which the state is taking away our own home rule. Can we have our own? Can we do a $75 and say the Ohio Revised Code is not? Or are we being preempted by the state?
We would then just continue to have lawsuits that would pop up about this.
If I might add, I think that issue has to be resolved, but you have to understand that the state has said maximum, it has not said minimum.
That's what I thought.
And I believe until that is determined, that the city of Athens does have the right to impose a minimum fee or maximum fee, whichever. We have that, it hasn't been taken away yet. So we may end up, if we do change it, say, to make it lower than the state, that may be challenged and the state, the court system may say, no, you didn't have the right to do it. But it's certainly worth considering whether we want to just jump on what has been set by the state. There are different viewpoints on that, certainly. If I might add my two cents to it, I really think 129 is far too much. I'm an attorney, I make, in a court system, I make $75 an hour on an appointed case. That pays for secretary usually, it pays for all the office, it pays for the legal education, it pays for the machines, it pays for lots of things. So, I mean, although I might be sympathetic to somebody who has to pay out $125,000 for a tow truck, that person's getting a lot of tax write-offs too. So I'm concerned with the fact that it's a heavy charge, it's a heavy bite to a consumer or to a citizen whose car is being towed. That's one thing that I'm very concerned with. We sometimes forget the fact that not only do we have a high number of rentals in Athens, but we have a lot of low-income people in Athens, especially students who are working at minimum wage in places. And another thing that really concerns me is the fact that often the tow companies will show up and not take the, not give the person the opportunity to pay the show-up fee or the lesser fee, but actually just take the car off. And I would say student or person, the car owner, is left with having to pay the more expensive fee as well as any additional charges, storage charges, which are then imposed as well. So from my perspective, although I applaud Pete for doing your research and talking to the tow operators, and I understand where they're coming from, again, I would think a much more reasonable fee under these circumstances would be a $75 fee. And I think Student Senate has expressed that concern as well, and I applaud them for having done so.
Okay. Yeah, I would just add to that, that, you know, we are a small community, we do have a high percentage of low-wage or no-wage residents. And the distances also that the local businesses have to travel in order to do that tow are less than a larger city, I would imagine. And if we're at the same rate as Columbus and Cleveland and Cincinnati, I'm not sure that makes sense to me. So I'd like to.
And, you know, I will say there, you know, this is, there's an easy way to avoid ever getting ever getting charged this, and it's kind of don't park your vehicle where you're not supposed to. But the other thing, too, is if we make the, if we make the charge more attainable, more affordable, are we going to have to call the tow companies more often? I mean, that's, you know, I mean, at some point, should it just be, you know, people know, whoa, this is, this is going to cost me X amount.
If I could toss one other thing in, you mentioned that one of the towing companies is the kind that goes around and sees your cars parked in the wrong place and tow's it offhand. I can't tell you how many times that has been abused. There's numerous parking spaces left and they're searching like a shark for that one quick tow when nobody's hurt by the fact that somebody has parked in a space for a minute to drop something off or something. So, I mean, there are two sides to this, that the fact that we only have one company doing that, I would almost say we have one company too many doing that under some circumstances, perhaps, you know, at the various times. I applaud it when the business will call the tow company because somebody's being actually hampered by an illegal parking. That's fine. I think the tow is justified and the price is justified under those circumstances, but I see a lot of abuse in Athens with the towing, and that bothers me as well.
And just for clarification, the tow operators are patrolling private property lots that are signed by, that, you know, are signed that they are being patrolled by, so that's, it's not like they're just out there just looking to hook onto things wherever they can. It's, the ground rules are set out there for that. And even if you park there for a minute just to run in and do something, that is, you're rolling the dice, you know, whether it's 75 or 129.
Yeah, if there's 20 spaces vacant.
Please.
Hi, I'm Jeff Reisner, Athens City Council, Second Ward. I'm a little confused about the fee. Now, the amount that you're wanting to raise it up to is 129?
Correct.
Okay. Now, that is a fine, correct?
Correct.
And that goes to the city?
No.
No?
No.
Where's it go?
No.
What? Tell me where it goes, here?
That would be to the operator.
To the operator?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So what does the city derive from this?
Nothing.
Oh.
They do, you know, they keep their public right-of-way clear. I mean, that is, that is the, that would be kind of a, Ms. Larry, Mayor, did you have something to mention on this, or, no, I'm sorry?
I need to do some fact checking, but there's likely a citation that goes along with that as well.
In our right-of-way?
Let me look into that. Let me look into that in terms of.
Not on private property.
Not on private, no, 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 no.
Well, let's just say it's a parking in front of a business, you know, say, a local bookstore, and someone's parked in the delivery zone and the semi can't get in, they call the tow truck to take the person out. So that person is, the car is towed away, and we would raise it up to 129, all that goes to the vendor, the tow truck operator. But the city derives no revenue from that, there's no fine, nothing to the city. Correct?
Well, if it's parked in a designated spot such as where the city has actually enacted an ordinance saying that you can't park here, the city has, then the city would, as the mayor indicated, have the right to impose a ticket, which is a fine, but that's in addition to the 129.
In addition to, correct.
Yeah. But private property, no.
All right. Okay, just, I guess that answers my question. Be sure not to park there.
And I don't, you know, I don't know if this is exactly what you're getting at, but I mean, this is, this is business, and why is the city getting into regulating business?
What probably stops people from killing each other to start with, you know, public peace and everything, we have to have the way the system works, and the city offers the service of setting rates. We set rates for many things, but this is one thing we set rates for.
Okay. Yes.
Beth Codfelter, 35 South Shannon Avenue. I've been going door-to-door a lot at Athens as I'm running for city council, and a whole lot of people have been complaining about the raise in property taxes and about the parking meters and all these fees that are going up, the sewer rates, the recycling rates, the composting rate, everything. And I think if we do another big increase from $50 to $129, that is not going to go over well with the public. So I think this would be a pretty bad time to do that because people are already really frustrated with the increases of costs. So if the city doesn't get any kind of financial benefit from this, I would like to have the fee to $75 like the Student Senate has proposed. That's my own opinion.
Can I ask, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Have you, have you checked with any of the businesses to see if this is something that they can survive on?
I have not, but I think if they've been surviving at $50 a tow, that perhaps they don't need to go up two and a half times in order to survive.
I don't believe they've been charging $50 a tow, and that's wherein lies the rub, is that they're charging above what's currently in Athens City Code, and so then they have a, you know, they have a case.
Do you know what they're currently charging?
I don't, I don't, I didn't ask what that was.
It would be interesting to know what percentage of increase $129 would represent.
And this is not, not necessarily, like all the other stuff that you mentioned, that's, those are city services, that's stuff that we pay for.
Correct.
I want to stress again, there are ways to avoid ever paying 129 or $50 or 75.
True.
There is one way to do it.
But people do get towed, good people, our neighbors get towed. Plus tourists get towed a lot when they come in for big weekends, and it sounds like in some ways, we're trying to make this a very tourist-friendly community for the Bayleys Trail and with the Airbnbs. So I think that it would be best if we try to keep the fees a little bit lower than that, and I think $75 sounds good.
All right. Yes, there was one more.
I'd have to sign in today.
Please.
All right, so I just wanted to clarify a few points. There's a lot of talk how there's only one towing company that's patrolling for people to tow, and in a lot of states, it's actually considered predatory towing and are laws against that. Something that's anything we should really be encouraging as a city, like, to me, that's kind of sketchy, to say the least. I also want to say where Student Senate got a number of $75 from, that is the $50 towing fee from 2002 adjusted for inflation. So like, over 20 years, $50, it's now $75. And there's some talk about like, the cost of employee compensation, like, for injuries and all that, but I don't really see professionals having gotten more dangerous in the last 20 years. So I wonder, like, why are we bringing that up as a comparative expense? Because that really hasn't gone up, like, so if they could have survived off of $50 in 2002, they could survive off of $75 now, like, I don't see it being a major issue. And I think a lot of the conversation has been about, like, what's good for the businesses in Athens, Ohio, and I really think what's more important is what's good for the residents, because like ultimately, like, as a city representative, we are, you are not here to advocate for businesses, you're here to advocate for the residents of Athens. That's all I really wanted to say. Thank you.
Can I say one last thing? Being a business owner, the only business owner that's on this dais, I do have to speak for businesses because businesses have employees that pay taxes to the city, so it's, you always have to, you always have to listen to businesses, at least I do, because I understand that every good business within the city of Athens is two to three months, you know, out from not being in business. And so if there's something that needs to be looked at in that fashion, unfortunately, I carry that, that's me, so, thank you.
Might I have to say something on that?
Yes, yes, you can, please. I don't need to have the last word, so please. Would you please go up there? And I will say the next two bullet points are going to be real quick, so we're not going to be here forever.
No, I definitely am very supportive of local business. I believe it is a very necessary part of any community, but businesses that operate, like, at the expense of the residents of the area, I don't think those are the ones that we should be protecting. We should be protecting the ones that actually build community and support the residents of the area. And a towing company acting in a predatory fashion, that is not something that I personally hold any value to.
Okay, thank you. We really stacked this, this meeting up, didn't we? Moving on, ODOT-LPA agreement. We have a bridge deck repair that ODOT would like to do in March of 2020. This is, of course, once again, one of those standard agreements where ODOT is coming in and doing 100% of the work and cost. The bridge itself is the, it's on State Route 56, just past, is it still Kerr Drive? I believe it still is, where, just past the UPS building.
Kenny Drive.
Is it Kenny Drive?
I think it's Kenny.
Okay, I'm sorry. Just to the west of the UPS station, but before Morrison Gordon, going over the railroad line there. So March 2020, so we're expecting to see a deck replacement there. Any questions about that? Member Butler.
Kent Butler, City Council, Second Street, 131. Thank you for the update. Do you know if they'll be widening that particular bridge as well with the new decking? I know it can be narrow at times.
I have, I have not, not heard any specific details about it.
I will do some fact checking for you, Councilmember Butler. I believe that there is some, but let me go back and look at the plan for that. This is the, this is the bridge that goes over the CSX Railroad, or the railroad, whatever it is, that goes along Margaret Creek in that area, and it is Kenny Drive. I'm with you, I was thinking Kerr Drive as well.
Thank you.
Kind of one and the same.
All right. Yep, and then, okay, the last one tonight. This is just a final visit to the Richland Bridge over Coates Run, so the project that happened this, this summer on Richland Avenue, just by the Ohio University End. We're asking to amend ordinance 0118, that we need to authorize an additional expenditure of $94,000. Basically, the project ran into three flood events, which threw, threw back the construction a little bit. The other thing was additional lighting that they had to put in, so basically, there was a punch list of, of things that ended up having to get added on here, and each one of them is, you know, I see $6,000, $8,000. I'll share this, I'll share this document with council. We were able to claw back a little bit for contractor error, that was $10,000, and then there was liquidated damages because it wasn't done on time. But, you know, like, another, another point was, we had to keep an inspector on the site, I think, for an additional two weeks. And so, bottom line is, the project that happened on Richland Avenue this summer is $94,000 more than what was anticipated. There is, there is funding, I believe it's in 572, and so that is where they're asking to have that appropriation come from to handle these expenditures. Yes?
Is the city picking up the entire amount for the, or is the state picking up any of that?
They are having, the city is having conversations with ODOT to see if there's additional funds that will be put forth, but we don't have, we don't have an answer on that just yet.
We will be talking with ODOT.
Thank you.
Anyone else up here? Go to the audience. Okay. I think we're good. I am done. Thank you.
Almost.
Almost.
Finance and personnel, we now have chaired by Councilmember Reisner, and then we'll have Butler, Councilmember Butler-Crowell and Cottis.
Me, too.
It's been that long. My foot went to sleep. Okay, let's get this show on the road. Finance and Personnel Committee. We have four bullet points here. I'm glad the auditor's in the audience, because we'll be needing her expertise on this, as well as the mayor. Appropriations and transfers. What do we have coming up for that? Hopefully, none.
Not right away. I have a couple of things we haven't discussed, I guess I could let people know they're out there.
We're going to talk about them tomorrow, aren't we?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think we're going to, I don't think I've put this out there, but need to appropriate some money for Personnel Services in the Recreation Fund. And the other one is the two notes that we have due in December at Hocking Valley for the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant. So I don't have any more information.
Mayor, do you have anything?
Yes.
All right. Fire truck purchase. I believe we've been talking about a new pumper truck, somewhere in the neighborhood of around $700,000.
Yes.
And the fire chief has expressed desire, he'd like to get this thing moving because it takes 10, if we ordered it today, it couldn't be delivered for almost a year. So we've got to get things moving, if it's going to come any time between now and 2021.
Correct. Chief Reimer has identified the type of truck and the, all the accessories to that truck, and it does take about 10 months to almost a year, because these aren't something that you just pull off a lot somewhere. A lot of these are custom-made. I would like to mention to council, after safety meeting this morning, Chief Reimer indicated to me that, once again, pumper 1002 is having issues and we have to send it up to Columbus, and that's what we're seeing a lot of. We're starting to see with some of our aging pumper trucks, you know, continual repair having to take place, and it's time to start moving some of these pumper trucks to, to become our backup.
Backup.
Start cycling through. Member Butler.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Patterson, for the update as well. This, I'm reminded of a conversation I had years ago with Chief Troxel, in which he was asked by the then-mayor, I don't remember if it was Mayor Abel or his predecessor, but, and that was to begin to formulate a plan of when to replace trucks, so that we can budget for them, we could have a plan, we could be prepared. And my understanding at the time was the proposed plan was 20-year rotations, and our trucks see a lot more fire runs today than they did years ago. So they get beat up more, they're running to campus more, consequently, the repairs necessitate more attention. Likewise, my understanding- the repairs necessitate more attention. Likewise, my understanding is, some of the benefits of us purchasing newer equipment is we get rid of dirty diesel, and we'd be running more clean, energy-efficient type of vehicles. Thank you.
Member Kostas.
Yes, the, how, and I was kind of wondering about the old truck. It's, what are we replacing here? Do we know the age of it? Are there, is this a bigger truck? Is it, are there newer features or anything like that, or?
A lot of its newer features. It wouldn't be bigger, as I understand it. What I can do is I can certainly get you the information on the truck that would be retired.
I'm curious more than anything else.
Standard pumper truck is what it is. I think in terms of size, we're kind of restricted by the buildings that we now have.
Yes, I'm confident.
Right, so.
Because we have, it's a newer tanker truck that we have. Is that correct? I've stood the, seen the one with the LEDs, and it can haul water.
That's the ladder truck.
The ladder truck. Yeah.
Well, no, we, it was most recent that we purchased a pumper truck, but it was another pumper truck.
Okay, okay, got it.
Yeah, I was just going to add to that, that we are still paying off another pumper truck, but we did, since I've been uptown, purchase a ladder truck and pay it off, which was 1.1 million. And we are paying down on this other pumper truck. We're about to pay that, council. That ordinance just went through, and Friday, we're going to pay down $100,000 on that. We have the help from OU, $50,000 a year to help pay for those. So, we'll be down to $223,000 on the other pumper truck, which was almost $700,000. It was 685 or something like that, so.
So, we'll probably roll the note.
Yeah.
Rather than take out a, a whole new loan.
No, we'll have to have a new one for this new truck.
I see.
And then we'll just keep paying down on the one that we have. So, probably it'll be paid off in two years, the other one.
The one that we, that we're paying on now?
Mm-hmm.
Not the new one?
Right. We'll just be starting on that one, so.
Yeah, darn.
So, seven, eight years maybe is what it takes.
Well, we'll be buying another one by that time.
Probably. I don't know.
Any other information on this that?
No, but I will get you information on the, the truck that will be replaced.
So, Monday, we should start, I believe we should start an ordinance through then, this, this coming Monday. Member Butler?
Thank you, and thank you, Auditor Heck, for reminding us as well, too, that Ohio University has been helping us with the past two purchases. And I can't remember if they will be assisting us with this one as well? Is that, are they continuing the $50,000 for this one as well? Is that where it's getting?
Well, we don't know, but I'd like to think that they would continue to do that, but...
I will, I will continue to, to press for that, to keep, continue that program, moving program, that, that donation to the city.
Any idea what the majority of the runs are from the fire department?
Well, the, the majority of them are to Ohio University on campus somewhere. Everything from burnt popcorn to kitchen fires, you know, it's soup to nuts.
But it still wears an engine out, and it's still employee time, no matter if it's a popcorn fire or a...
Sure, sure. But that's the, that's the role and job of our firefighters, is to protect and serve. If I may, and this is related to the fire department, but I, you know, it's important that all of our employees have good operational equipment, and to retire something that is aged, I think is the most responsible thing to do, to protect our employees and have, provide for them good equipment, much like the CO2 exhaust system that was just, just installed recently at headquarters, much like down at Station 2. They now have a system to where it removes harmful exhaust from the, the stalls. So, and that was a move to where we're, again, protecting our city employees.
Okay. All right, then. Next item is amend Title 17, municipal income tax to bring up to the way the state of Ohio wants it to be, rather than the way we like it to be?
Yes.
Is that sort of it?
As you know, this is...
Home rule goes out the window again?
Yes.
Oh, good, okay. At least we're consistent with that.
Yes, they are consistent. There've been a lot of changes, and this is another one, regarding SERPs, which are the Special Executive Retirement Plans. And just to let you know, I know Tina has been, and Tina Timberman has been in contact with Debbie, and Tina has her wording written out now, and she will be contacting Debbie for, to put the wording into an ordinance. I told her she had till noon on Wednesday to have something.
What will be the financial impact for the city?
I don't know on that one offhand. So, the, these are retirement plans for people that make over, make a lot of money. So, we don't have any of them in the city.
Well, okay, then.
So, I don't see these things, but it's, it's just another one.
Probably.
And shipping, there've been a lot of them, so even if we're limited on how many we have here in, in Athens, it's just, we've been hit pretty hard already, and it's just...
It's going to make you wonder what they got in, in mind next week.
I know, I know.
Control the city.
Just take it over. Just come in.
Ohio dominance. I don't know, but...
You will serve the state. I like it.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's, that's where we are in that. So, we should have that ready on Monday.
The Monday, we'll introduce it. And, okay, since you're up there, I guess you want to reduce year-end appropriations as authorized. It's that time of the year. Got to get the, the lines balanced, so.
Yes, I do, I do. And just to remind everybody, this is a requirement from the state auditor's office, that we don't have more money appropriated than what we bring in. And although we've never spent more than we brought in, to have an appropriation on the book, say, for $100,000, but we only brought in $50,000, it appears that we could overspend our money, but we have never allowed that to happen. But the state wants us to go in and reduce the appropriations at the end of the year, if we know we're not going to get enough revenue to cover the appropriation. So, we do it as a blanket one. The first time I did this, our ordinance was about three pages long, and so now we do it as a blanket authorization to go in. We're probably a little better about budgeting now, but there's still quite a few of them that we go ahead and reduce. It gives us a truer picture in our year-end reports for budgeting of the next year, to see what is reasonable to project for revenue and expenses.
And this is going to cover all, all departments within the city?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And they're aware of that, right?
Well, yes. We've been doing it for several years now, so, and it's not caused any department of problems, but yeah.
Any questions from, no, no?
We do have a question.
Oh, from the, the audience?
Here you are.
You have a question about this particular item?
Not that particular item, but a question in general, if I may.
Is that permitted? May I enter?
That would be all right. You've sat here for three hours.
Just give us your name. Think about and see whether or not you've moved in this direction. Mr. Chairman, as you're aware, the county commissioners have a quarter of a percent sales tax initiative on the November ballot. The majority of that sales tax actually comes, or would come if passed, from food sales tax and retail establishments within the city. So, I'm wondering whether or not you, as the finance chair or city administrators, the mayor, have had conversations or plan to have conversations with the commissioners on the city of Athens getting a portion of that tax if passed, since the city is probably the biggest generator for that particular tax. And if, in fact, that becomes one of the primary sources, would it not make sense to negotiate some of that for city endeavors? Because there are a lot of projects, county and city projects, for example, you could even fund Bailey's Run. You've talked about that. That's an opportunity. You could renovate the armory. You could look at additional code enforcement officers. You could look at additional city and service personnel. And I just want to raise that and find out whether or not your thoughts have been in that direction, if you've had conversation. Do you plan to have conversation? I think that's something that people are interested in.
Well, just off the top of my head, I don't think the city has any, any legal leverage at all to be able to go to the county and say, I'd like to have a portion of your, of your sales tax. They're, they had that, that's their, that's theirs. We, we, we don't have any way of, other than if they just loved us to death and said, well, sure, here, take, take some of it, but honestly, I don't see how we could.
Sometimes if you don't ask, you don't get. And sometimes leaders have to be a little bit assertive and say, you know, here are the facts, and what are the opportunities there to participate in as a joint venture, as they, as they do in other counties?
I think, and I appreciate you making the comments tonight, and you're posing the question, and thank you so much for your time.
Well, a question implies a reply, doesn't it? That's what I'm trying to do. Well, okay, my committee stands adjourned.
Maybe the mayor has an answer.
No, I, I have not met with the county commissioners about this. I think what you're raising is a really valid point, and so therefore I'll start that conversation.
Okay. Stand adjourned at 10:03. Thank you so much, and we'll see you next week.